Good morning, everyone, and welcome to Members of the Public. We welcome you to our Policy Presentations and Public Hearing Meeting of the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors. Today is Tuesday, September 17th, 2024. Please note Supervisor Han will be absent from today's meeting. The Chief Executive Officer, County Council Executive Officer, and the Sergeant-at-Arms are all here to assist. And we will begin today's board meeting with our Land Acknowledgement. The County of Los Angeles recognizes that we occupy land originally and still inhabited and cared for by the Tongva, Tatiwim, Surrano, Kish, and Shumash peoples. We honor and pay respect to their elders and descendants, past, present, and emerging, as they continue their stewardship of these lands and waters. We acknowledge that settler colonization resulted in land seizure, disease, subjugation, slavery, relocation, broken promises, genocide, and multi-generational trauma. This acknowledgement demonstrates our responsibility and commitment to truth, healing, and reconciliation, and to elevating the stories, culture, and community of the original inhabitants of Los Angeles County. We are grateful to have the opportunity to live and work on these ancestral lands. We are dedicated to growing and sustaining relationships with native peoples and local tribal governments, including, in no particular order, the Fernandino-Tatiwim Band of Mission Indians, Gabrioleno-Tongva Indians of California Tribal Council, Gabrioleno-Tongva-San Gabriel Band of Mission Indians, Gabrioleno-Band of Mission Indians-Kish Nation, San Manuel-Band of Mission Indians, San Fernando-Band of Mission Indians. To learn more about the First Peoples of Los Angeles County, please visit our website. We'll now move on to our Scroll presentation portion of our meeting, and I will begin with the Third District. Good morning, everyone. As we kick off Latino Heritage Month in Los Angeles County, we honor and recognize the incredible impact our diverse Latino communities serve us countywide. And I have the privilege to honor the Lopez family of Encino, but we know their impact stretches far beyond the Third District. Today, we are joined by Leonardo, Iris, Fernando, Eduardo, Lalo, and the Mayor of Pico Rivera, Gustavo Camacho, home of the Pico Rivera Sports Arena, one of the community's gathering places owned by the Lopez family. This family is truly something special. They've created spaces where key milestones and moments are shared in our communities. And we know their family's impact transcends the walls of their thriving businesses because there's no one quite like you, Leonardo. Leonardo has instilled in each of his children a love and commitment to family that extends to include entire communities across the San Fernando Valley, Southeast Los Angeles, and truly every corner of Los Angeles County. As the owners of El Mariachi Grill, your entire family has more than built a thriving business, and you have very intentionally cultivated a space for community building and community action. Walking into El Mariachi is like receiving a big hug. It's that feeling of coming home that has given rise to leaders like our very own United States Senator Alex Padilla. But as we celebrate Latino Heritage Month, I also want to honor the countless ways the Lopez family has kept alive the traditions of their Mexican culture, traditions central to our history as Angelinos. Chariadas in San Francisco Canyon and the Pico Rivera Sports Arena and beyond. The legacy of your family and your community's service are already cemented in history books of Los Angeles. But how beautiful to have the next generation of the Lopez family sharing a deep commitment to civic involvement. We thank you for all you have done, all you continue to do, and all we know that you will do in the future. It's an honor to know your family, to have you as residents in our district, to have the support of your small businesses, and to see your ownership give rise to so many being able to see their dreams come true, as well as being true community builders of the Third District. The Lopez family is the very best of Los Angeles County. We thank you and we celebrate you. And on behalf of the board, we have a scroll to present to you, and we thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Let's give him a round of applause.
Thanks, everybody who made this possible. Thanks, the Board of Supervisors. All this is made only in America. God bless America. I came to this country in 1967. I was 17, and I've been working since. My wife and me, we were married in 1974, 50 years anniversary, golden. Six beautiful kids and 14 grandkids. Thanks, everybody, and thanks to the CEO of Pico Rivera, Gustavo Camacho, and thanks, everybody, that made this possible. God bless you guys.
Next, we'll call up the Fifth District.
I have a very, very special presentation this morning. Our Fifth District Honoree is a longtime leader in the movement to make sure the words "veteran" and "homeless" are never used together. After 18 years as CEO and President, Donna Deutschman is retiring from the helm of Homes for Families at the end of September. With a unique background in academia and philanthropy, Donna founded Homes for Families and built it into a strong and successful organization that it is today. Under Donna's leadership, Homes for Family has assisted 234 low-income families to achieve their dreams of affordable homeownership. There are some great pictures rotating on the screen behind me showcasing this work in action. Since deciding in 2017 to focus exclusively on veteran families, Homes for Families has provided 182 low-income veterans and their loved ones with supportive services while fulfilling their dreams of owning a home. In the next two years, Homes for Families will add 38 additional veteran families to this number through the current projects being worked on today. It is due to Donna's leadership.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to Members of the Public. We welcome you to our Policy Presentations and Public Hearing Meeting of the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors. Today is Tuesday, September 17th, 2024. Please note Supervisor Han will be absent from today's meeting. The Chief Executive Officer, County Council Executive Officer, and the Sergeant-at-Arms are all here to assist. And we will begin today's board meeting with our land acknowledgement. The County of Los Angeles recognizes that we occupy land originally and still inhabited and cared for by the Tongva, Tatiavim, Serrano, Kish, and Schumash peoples. We honor and pay respect to their elders and descendants, past, present, and emerging, as they continue their stewardship of these lands and waters. We acknowledge that settler colonization resulted in land seizure, disease, subjugation, slavery, relocation, broken promises, genocide, and multi-generational trauma. This acknowledgement demonstrates our responsibility and commitment to truth, healing, and reconciliation, and to elevating the stories, culture, and community of the original inhabitants of Los Angeles County. We are grateful to have the opportunity to live and work on these ancestral lands. We are dedicated to growing and sustaining relationships with native peoples and local tribal governments, including, in no particular order, the Fernandino-Tatiavim Band of Mission Indians, Gabrioleno-Tongva Indians of California Tribal Council, Gabrioleno-Tongva San Gabriel Band of Mission Indians, Gabrioleno Band of Mission Indians Kish Nation, San Manuel Band of Mission Indians, San Fernando Band of Mission Indians. To learn more about the First Peoples of Los Angeles County, please visit our website. We'll now move on to our scroll presentation portion of our meeting, and I will begin with the Third District. Good morning, everyone. As we kick off Latino Heritage Month in Los Angeles County, we honor and recognize the incredible impact our diverse Latino communities serve us countywide. And I have the privilege to honor the Lopez family of Encino, but we know their impact stretches far beyond the Third District. Today, we are joined by Leonardo, Iris, Fernando, Eduardo, Lalo, and the Mayor of Pico Rivera, Gustavo Camacho, home of the Pico Rivera Sports Arena, one of the community's gathering places owned by the Lopez family. This family is truly something special. They've created spaces where key milestones and moments are shared in our communities. And we know their family's impact transcends the walls of their thriving businesses, because there's no one quite like you, Leonardo. Leonardo has instilled in each of his children a love and commitment to family that extends to include entire communities across the San Fernando Valley, southeast Los Angeles, and truly every corner of Los Angeles County. As the owners of El Mariachi Grill, your entire family has more than built a thriving business, and you have very intentionally cultivated a space for community building and community action. Walking into El Mariachi is like receiving a big hug. It's that feeling of coming home that has given rise to leaders like our very own United States Senator Alex Padilla. But as we celebrate Latino Heritage Month, I also want to honor the countless ways the Lopez family has kept alive the traditions of their Mexican culture, traditions central to our history as Angelinos, chariadas in San Francisco Canyon, and the Pico Rivera Sports Arena and beyond. The legacy of your family and your community's service are already cemented in history books of Los Angeles. But how beautiful to have the next generation of the Lopez family sharing a deep commitment to civic involvement. We thank you for all you have done, all you continue to do, and all we know that you will do in the future. It's an honor to know your family, to have you as residents in our district, to have the support of your small businesses, and to see your ownership give rise to so many being so many being able to see their dreams come true, as well as being true community builders of the Third District. The Lopez family is the very best of Los Angeles County. We thank you, and we celebrate you. And on behalf of the board, we have a scroll to present to you, and we thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Let's give him a round of applause.
Thanks, everybody who made this possible. Thanks, the Board of Supervisors. All this is made only in America. God bless America. I came to this country in 1967. I was 17, and I've been working since. My wife and me, we were married in 1974, 50 years anniversary. Golden. Six beautiful kids and 14 grandkids. Thanks, everybody, and thanks to the CEO of Pico Rivera, Gustavo Camacho, and thanks, everybody, that made this possible. God bless you guys.
Next, we'll call up the Fifth District.
I have a very, very special presentation this morning. Our Fifth District Honoree is a longtime leader in the movement to make sure the words "veteran" and "homeless" are never used together. After 18 years as CEO and President, Donna Deutschman is retiring from the helm of Homes for Families at the end of September. With a unique background in academia and philanthropy, Donna founded Homes for Families and built it into a strong and successful organization that it is today. Under Donna's leadership, Homes for Family has assisted 234 low-income families to achieve their dreams of affordable homeownership. There are some great pictures rotating on the screen behind me showcasing this work in action. Since deciding in 2017 to focus exclusively on veteran families, Homes for Families has provided 182 low-income veterans and their loved ones with supportive services while fulfilling their dreams of owning a home. In the next two years, Homes for Families will add 38 additional veteran families to this number through the current projects being worked on today. It is due to Donna's leadership that Homes for Families was able to create its proven model of care for veteran families aptly called "veteran enrichment neighborhoods." Their work has been transformational for families in the Fifth District and beyond, and our communities truly are enriched by the veterans who call them home. Homes for Families has a neighborhood of 56 homes in Palmdale that is in its final phases, and I would encourage you all to look online or go up and see what an amazing, amazing neighborhood this is. There are also completed projects in Pacoima, Silmar, and Santa Clarita, plus more homes being planned in North Hollywood. Prior to these accomplishments, Donna was still very engaged in serving Los Angeles County families in need. Before founding Homes for Families, Donna served as a CEO of Habitat for Humanities San Fernando Santa Clarita Valley Chapter. Under her leadership, the organization became one of the top 5% of Habitat chapters, building an impressive 359 homes. Prior to that, Donna served as the National Director of Model Development at the Lisa Gibbons Memory Foundation, where she built partnerships to support families with members suffering from memory impairment. Donna has written two pieces of legislation that were passed by the California Legislature and has helped conduct seminal research for housing and aging populations. In 2018, she was honored by the San Fernando Valley Business Journal as Not-for-Project Profit Businesswoman of the Year. Then, in 2019, she was recognized by the Building Industry Association's Los Angeles Ventura Chapter with the Lynn Jacobs Memorial Affordable Housing Award. For her work, she has been appointed to the U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs, Veterans Community Oversight, and Education Board Federal Advisory Committee. That's a mouthful. It's clear that in every role she's had, Donna has been deeply committed to serving her community, and I have seen it firsthand. I've had a front-row seat, Donna, to see your passion put into play. Over the years, I've been proud to partner with her and Homes for Family on several projects across the Fifth District. From conception to construction, to Move-In Day, Donna's leadership has paved the way for these families to move into their dream homes and build bright futures for their families. Donna, the foundation you've laid for Homes for Families will continue to better the lives of veterans and their families for generations to come. It is with deep appreciation that I honor you for all you've done for veterans and their families in the Fifth District and well beyond Los Angeles County. I am truly, truly honored that you let me walk this with you. And when you hand over the keys to the families and see their emotion, but also their appreciation, because they have been providing the sweat equity, and you provided them with an opportunity to truly live the American dream in owning a home. So with that, Donna, I have a proclamation celebrating your retirement. I look forward to working with you. I know you're not going to retire out of the business, but you're just going to let someone else take over as CEO while you continue to give back in ways that are countless. Thank you. Let's give a round of applause. Would you like to say a few words, Donna? I'll hold this.
Thank you. I'd like to thank Catherine Barger, who's been a leader in our community, serving veterans and helping to heal mental health issues. And sometimes, unfortunately, those two things go hand in hand. I want to thank the Board of Supervisors and everyone who's helped to fund these homes for veterans. Veterans are all populations in America today in terms of diversity, in terms of economic power, and in terms of need. And it's been an honor to serve veterans, and we just cannot say enough about Catherine's assistance in doing so throughout LA County.
Thank you, Donna. Thank you. And now, I believe we're doing the First District? First District presentations.
Good morning, everyone. Buenos dias. I'd like to thank everyone this morning and really take this opportunity to recognize two very outstanding leaders. Many of you know that last Tuesday, we proclaimed September 15th through October 15th, 2024, as Hispanic Heritage Month in Los Angeles County, and it's known throughout the country. So yes, you can applaud for that. That's something that we've all earned. Last Friday, we had our annual Hispanic Heritage Month reception, where we honored 12 incredible individuals. And today, I'd like to personally recognize two honorees who couldn't make the reception, but we have them here today. But before I bring them forward to speak, and I would like to play a video of the event last week.
Hi, I'm Supervisor Hilda Solis, representing the First District. And today, I'm honored to host our ninth annual Hispanic Heritage Month celebration. As you know, on September 15th through October 15th, we welcome celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month across this country, and especially here in LA County, since we know that more than 50% of the population of the 10 million people happen to be either Hispanic, Latino, or immigrant. And we know that this is so important for our community. And today, we celebrated 12 outstanding individuals who represent a plethora of different careers and segments of our economy, in education, in the arts, in medical areas, all the things that bring us together. And the fact that they happen to be Hispanic is a day and a month of celebration for us. So we are happy that the County of Los Angeles is making a big statement by also celebrating alongside with us, and we were so happy to have so many outstanding individuals be recognized. And throughout the month, you're going to see other things previewed at the board meetings with other board offices also celebrating people who have made contributions in their districts, representing our Hispanic culture.
Hi, I'm Richard Zaldebar, the Executive Director and the founder of the Wallace Memorias. Being honored here at Hispanic Heritage Celebration, sponsored by Supervisor Hilda Solis, is a huge honor for me.
Hello, I'm Diego Rodriguez, and I serve as Executive Vice President and Chief Operating Officer for Alma Family Services. To be embraced by the community and to be recognized for something that I love doing, which is to serve my community, is truly moving.
So it's a time of celebration, and we're so happy to be here to celebrate with our friends and with the County of Los Angeles. So let the festivities begin.
Thank you. Again, as we celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month, it is with great pride and honor and admiration that I take this opportunity to recognize Dr. Francisco C. Rodriguez, who is the Chancellor of the Los Angeles Community College District. This month is a time to honor the rich cultural heritage, remarkable contributions, and enduring legacy of the Latino community. And Dr. Rodriguez exemplifies these values in every aspect of his work. Dr. Rodriguez has dedicated his career to enhancing educational opportunities and fostering inclusive excellence within our community college system. Under his leadership, the Los Angeles Community College District has made significant strides in providing access to quality education and supportive services for students from very diverse backgrounds. This includes increased federal and state revenues to the district's nine colleges, sponsoring landmark legislation to facilitate college access and success, passing two local facilities' bonds totaling $8.6 billion in hiring over 1,100 full-time tenure-track faculty while increasing faculty and staff racial and gender diversity. And he didn't stop there. He also helped to expand community and business engagement and philanthropy to records levels. These achievements are a testament to his effective leadership and the progress made under his tenure. His commitment to educational equity and his passion for empowering students has had a profound impact on our community and the lives of many students. Prior to LACCD, Dr. Rodriguez served as a Superintendent-President at Miracosta Community College District in North San Diego County, President at Consuminis River College in Sacramento, and Executive Dean at Woodland Community College. He began his professional career in student affairs at UC Davis, and I believe that's where we first ran into each other, doing student outreach and helping to recruit Latinos and other underserved students to our colleges. Let us celebrate Dr. Rodriguez's contributions during this Hispanic Heritage Month and recognize the invaluable role he has played in shaping and bettering the lives of so many. We will surely miss him as he retires from his position this November to care for his parents. So please give him a big round of applause, and we will hear shortly from him. I also have the privilege to recognize Assembly Member Miguel Santiago, a dedicated leader and advocate who embodies the spirit and resilience of our Latino community. Assembly Member Santiago was first elected in November of 2014 to represent the 54th Assembly District, one of the most vibrant and diverse districts in California. He was born in Los Angeles to hard-working immigrant parents and the first in his family to graduate from college, earning his degree at UCLA. Assembly Member Santiago has been a powerful voice in Sacramento, championing policies that advance justice, equity, and opportunity for all. He currently serves as Assistant Majority Leader. In addition, Assembly Member Santiago serves as Chair of the Assembly Select Committee on Los Angeles County Homelessness, where he's focused on finding urgent solutions to end homelessness, and he's been a great partner on that. He also sits on other key assembly committees: the Arts, Entertainment, Sports, and Tourism, Health, Utilities, and Energy Committees. His commitment to addressing critical issues such as healthcare, affordable housing, education, immigrants' rights, and environmental justice, such as urgently addressing the excite technologies disaster, he's been a pivotal voice in helping to shape the policy. Through his leadership, he has consistently demonstrated a deep understanding of the challenges that we all face and a resolute determination to address them. Miguel Santiago's dedication to public service and his unwavering support for underserved communities exemplifies the values that we celebrate during Hispanic Heritage Month. We thank him for his 10 years of service to the 54th Assembly District, and we wish him well in his future endeavors. Please give him a big round of applause. And now, I would like to turn the microphone over to Dr. Rodriguez and then to Assembly Member Santiago.
Thank you, Supervisor Solis, for your exemplary leadership and service to this county, to this state, and to this nation. It is an honor, un privilegio, un honor, y un orgullo, to receive this from you. And in doing so, I accept this on behalf of Francisco and Amelia Rodriguez, my parents, hard-working immigrants who came from Mexico, who sacrificed everything so that their children can have an opportunity through education. So as we recognize this month, that recognizes the contributions of Latinos all across this country, let's never forget the people who pick our fields, the people who provide food, shelter, and other kinds of services to our nation, and recognize their sacrifice that has helped a person like me that I stand here before you with great, great pride. Thank you also in recognizing the Los Angeles Community College District. We've been a longtime partner with the County of Los Angeles. Thank you for recognizing that education is the path forward to economic and social mobility, and that every person should have the opportunity for high-quality and affordable education. And to my good friend, Assembly Member Miguel Santiago, you were the person that passed that landmark legislation that allows every Californian to receive a tuition-free education for two years, and now, at the governor's desk, is an opportunity for a four-year degree tuition-free. So Assembly Member Santiago, members of the Board of Supervisors, Supervisor Solis, thank you very much.
I do want to thank the Board of Supervisors for all their hard work. Nowhere in the country have we seen a more dedicated group of folks who have tackled some of the hardest issues, including homelessness, income inequality, tenant protections, and the affordable housing push that we've seen both at the ballot and inside of this building. But in particular, I want to thank my supervisor, Solis, because she's never forgotten who we are in the 53rd and 54th Assembly District. When excite came up and it was the worst environmental disaster, she was that force that helped to push us all, and we all grabbed hands together. But really, we couldn't have done an ounce of the work had you not been standing there. When it's come to tackling the homelessness crisis in our area, you pushed extremely hard to make sure the dollars reached us. For your community college, you were there. So all I did is to say, really, thank you for honoring me, but I think a great deal of the work that we did was because you stepped up and gave us the will without to complete it. Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Next up, we have the Second District. I love that sash. Beautiful.
Hello, all. A girl doesn't turn 60 but one time, so I thought I'd wear my sash. And let me say to folks, 60 ain't half bad. I'm kind of liking it. It's working out okay so far?
It looks good on you, Madam Supervisor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate you. It's so good to see you. It gives me great honor today to acknowledge two nonprofit organizations in my district. You know, I come on close. Coming from the nonprofit sector before I ran for public office, I understand the importance of collaboration. And government has our role to play, but the nonprofit sector plays a critical role, particularly here at local government, given what we do. LA County, the county level of government is the social safety net. And partnering with community-based organizations to make sure that we meet the need of every Angelino is what these people who are flanking me help us do here in LA County each and every day. So I want to congratulate Wellness on its 100-year anniversary. Happy birthday to you, too. So let me start by thanking Wellness President and CEO, Charlene Dimas Pinedo. I also want to acknowledge the Wellness Executive Leadership Team in attendance today: Jimbaia, Andrea Salazar, Paco Retana, Laura Alvarez, and Rebecca Hozling. Give them a round of applause. They are the executive leadership team, but they have lots of people who support them and doing the amazing work they do each and every day. Wellness is a new name. The name isn't 100 years old. You will remember them by their former name, LA Child Guidance Clinic. It's a 100-year-old organization, and its mission is to provide holistic emotional well-being and mental health services, and most of all, hope and healing and opportunity to our youngest constituents, our children, our young adults, and families in need across LA County in its entirety. For over 100 years, Wellness has been dedicated to providing vital mental health services and housing to vulnerable children and their families. Wellness provides our youth with a safe space to do homework, to get your laundry done. I saw the laundry facility at Expo. To get connected to housing and services and find healing and support. This is a trauma-informed model that the Board of Supervisors is proud to represent and to replicate in all five of our districts. Over the last 20 years, the partnership between the Board of Supervisors and Wellness has enabled this amazing organization to significantly expand its reach, offering, again, comprehensive mental health services in seven locations across the county. I'm proud to have two NESTs. Get it, Wellness? NESTs in my district. In 2022, the Nest on Florence opened, offering 51 units of housing with onsite services, including therapy and substance abuse counselors, to serve young adults, many who are parents, parents of small children, who have experienced homelessness or have aged out of our foster care system. And now, the recent groundbreaking of the Nest on exposition, a third location will be added to the Second District. This location received $5.8 million from Project Home Key this year for a modular project that will provide 24 interim housing units for young adults experiencing houselessness. for young adults experiencing houselessness. And I will be very excited to come tour that site as well. So we appreciate Wellness' thoughtful and compassionate approach. I want to call on Carleen, our fearless leader, to provide some remarks, and thank you on behalf of all of your team that's present today.
Good morning, and good morning to the members of the Board of Supervisors. I am Charlene Dimas-Pinedo, President and CEO of Wellness, together with members of the Board of Directors and our entire leadership team. Supervisor Holly Mitchell, we are honored to be recognized today. Wellness was founded in 1924 by subject matter experts and community members who saw a need for mental health services for children. In 1924, mental health was in its infancy. But yet, these leaders, leaders of our community, had a vision, a vision to provide cutting-edge mental health services that were research, evidence-based practice, culturally sensitive to meet the mental health needs of children at that time. We have since grown to expand our mental health, trauma-informed services from South Los Angeles to downtown Los Angeles to East LA. We have expanded our core services to include permanent supportive housing and interim housing for transition-age youth, many of these young people who are aging out of foster care or the justice care system, and providing wraparound supportive services to change their trajectory and their future. We could not be prouder to celebrate this monumental milestone, 100 years of serving our community. And we remain steadfast in our commitment to the mission to provide these critically needed services, especially at a time that they are needed the most. And we will continue to offer hope, healing, and opportunity to the hundreds upon hundreds of children, young adults, and families that enter our doors every single day. So again, on behalf of our Board of Directors, our leadership, our staff, and our community, we thank you Supervisor Holly Mitchell for this recognition.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you. And I want to thank my colleagues in the board for joining me. So let's say five signature proclamation acknowledging your 100th birthday, but more importantly, the work that you're doing each and every day to help our most vulnerable. Are we going to step in front of the dais? What do you want us to do? So everybody step in the front?
Happy birthday?
Happy birthday. Congratulations to everyone. Thank you so much for being here this morning, and we have one more.
So it's not lost on me. Every time we have these presentations, there's always so much synergy between who we're recognizing, you know, housing for veterans, housing and support for young people. It's not lost on me that Hispanic Heritage Month, Supervisor Solis, is also the time in which we as a county talk about hate and our LA versus Hate work that will be commencing this week, too. And in that light, I want to welcome and thank the leaders of the South Bay Community Coalition Against Hate. And I'm honored to recognize you all for the hard work you do year-round, because hate doesn't just pop up for one month, it's all the time. But specifically today for your work to sponsor a full week's worth of events for United Against Hate Week. United Against Hate Week is a powerful reminder that everyone, everyone can do something proactively to combat hate, and it starts with making a daily commitment to take a stand, to take a stand against racism, homophobia, and any other form of hate that only serves to divide us. We can, on a daily basis, be proactive anti-racist in our language, in our behavior, in our treatment of each other, in observing hateful acts rendered on our family, friends, and neighbors. So it's inspiring to see organizations within the South Bay Community Coalition and across LA County join in commemorating this important week with free cultural events, including a peace poll, candlelight vigils, powerful discussions, and a food drive for a nutrition pantry. So this week is important because it promotes inclusivity. It raises awareness. It empowers us all. It strengthens communities, and important, most important to me, I think, it encourages open, honest dialogue. Recent events demonstrate the dire need for this ongoing work. And let me say unequivocally, hatred in any form is unwelcome in LA County. It's our collective responsibility to fight this fight because we are stronger when we work together. So I want to encourage our South Bay communities to get involved with this amazing coalition. Additionally, we encourage every county resident to check out all of the great events happening with LA versus Hate by visiting lavershathate.org. They've got great lawn signs. I have one in front of my house that talks about hate does not live here. So we all can figure out a way to communicate our desire to live in a community that condemns hate. So my homegirl, the chairwoman, Hildy Stern, couldn't join us today, but I want to thank her for her leadership in founding this coalition and organizing so many of these impactful events. Here today, I'd like to present El Segundo School Board Member Tracy Miller-Zarnicki and Hermosa School Board Member Maggie Bov La Monica to say a few words on behalf of the coalition. I appreciate you both for coming. Thank you.
Thank you for having us. Yes, my name is Tracy, and this is Maggie. We will give you a little background on our coalition. We formed under the leadership of Hildy Stern, as Supervisor mentioned. That was in fall of 2022. It was under the direction of the Manhattan Beach City Council in response to increased hate crimes in their community. And it brought together approximately 15 members, including city leadership, leaders of faith-based organizations, county programs like LA versus Hate. Of course Supervisor Mitchell was part of that. And the coalition quickly grew as neighboring cities learned of the cause and the impact that that group was having. It grew to encompass the four beach cities of El Segundo, Hermosa Beach, Redondo Beach, and along with Manhattan Beach, and other government entities like the Beach Cities Health District, private organizations like PFLAG, and South Bay Families Connected, and our state representatives also, Assemblymember Marit Succi and Senator Ben Allen. Our membership is now over 60 members strong. And together, this collaboration of thought leaders represents cities, schools, businesses, faith-based organizations, and other community partners. And we come together, really, all year long, not just in our, you know, United Against Hate Week, because unfortunately, it is a year-round thing we must battle. We come together to reduce acts of hatred, working to counteract and prevent bias, disrespect, discrimination, verbal and physical abuse, harassment threats, defacing of property violence, and the creation of environments of fear against any person in our community, any group, any population that might feel this way. We unequivocally condemn the divisive forces of hate, inequity, and justice against all persons and communities. Together, we say to those who are victims of such acts, we see you, we hear you, we stand with you. We believe in the fair treatment of all human beings in an effort to foster peaceful coexistence with others. Our Coalition Against Hate will continue to elevate our collective consciousness across our community through education, training, and community engagement. While we as individuals may not agree on some socio-political issues or solutions, we strongly agree that all human beings should be treated fairly in a respectful and civil manner, and expect mutually respectful treatment in return. Now I'm going to hand the microphone over to Maggie to tell you more about what's going on down there.
While trying to educate and engage our communities as a regular practice, we're honored to share the special events that are happening across the South Bay in El Segundo, Manhattan Beach, Hermosa Beach, Redondo Beach during the United Against Hate Week. Saturday, we have the International Day of Peace Wave. On Sunday, there is the Community Interfaith Gathering for LGBTQ+ solidarity on the Rainbow Doors of Welcome Panel Discussion and also a fair. Next, the following week, we have School Safety Supporting LGBTQ+ Mental Health hosted by PFLAG on our Beach Cities Health District.
And in our little town of El Segundo, on the 26th, we are having a peace poll dedication, co-hosted by the El Segundo Unified District and the Rotary Club in our town. Also on Thursday, the 26th, at 6:00 PM, we have the Candlelight Vigil that our city's Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee will be hosting at Library Park. And we invite everyone in LA County to come and join us in these events, and again, to do this important work that we are so grateful that Supervisor Mitchell is a key member of. We are happy to do this with you. We hope someday to not have to do this kind of work, but until then, we will keep at it and try to build our peaceful coexistence. Thank you for having us so much.
Thank you. And I want to thank the coalition for all of the work that you're doing. I want to thank all of the members in the coastal communities, and thank you for your partnership with our Racial Justice Learning Exchange, an event that we host monthly in the 2nd District. We've come to all of those communities. You all have partnered with us to continue to create a safe space to have a conversation about race and racial justice, and how we can all be proactive anti-racist. So give them a round of applause, please, for this important, timely work. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, and congratulations once again. Executive Officer, please call the agenda.
Please note Supervisor Solis will leave at 11:00 AM today. We will begin on Page 3, Set Matters. Set Matter 1 is a report on the county's implementation of the people experiencing homelessness missions. This item will be held for discussion. On Set Matter 2, the Director of Mental Health requests that this item be continued to December 10, 2024, as indicated on the posted agenda. On Page 4, Public Hearing, Items 3 through 6. On Items 3 and 5, the Director of Regional Planning requests that these items be continued to October 29, 2024, as indicated on the posted agenda. The remaining public hearing items will be held for hearing. On Page 7, Administrative Matter, Item 7, Supervisor Barker requests that this item be held. On Page 8, Policy Presentations. On Item 8, Supervisor Solis requests that this item be continued one week to September 24, 2024. Item 9 will be held for report. On Item 10, Supervisor Han requests that this item be continued two weeks to October 1, 2024, as indicated on the posted agenda. That completes the reading of the agenda, Madam Chair. The requests for continuance are before you.
Moved by Supervisor Solis, seconded by Supervisor Barker to approve these items. That will be the order. Executive Officer, please play our Code of Conduct.
Ladies and gentlemen, may I please have your attention? The meeting of the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors is about to commence. A Code of Conduct will now be read, and we request that you comply with it to ensure the efficient administration of the meeting. Members of the public, it is your right to participate in today's board hearing, and the board encourages such participation. However, the right of the public to address the board must be balanced with the need to ensure that public comment does not interfere with the orderly course of the board's business. All are reminded to abide by the following rules. Speakers must cease speaking immediately when their time has ended. Public comment on agenda items must relate to the subject matter of that item. General public comment is limited to subjects within the jurisdiction of the board. Public comment does not include the right to engage in a dialogue with board members or staff. Please remain respectful of the forum and refrain from uttering, writing, or displaying profane, personal, threatening, derogatory, demeaning, or other abusive statements toward the board, any member thereof, staff, or any other person. Members of the audience should be respectful of the views expressed by speakers, staff, and board members, and may not clap, cheer, whistle, or otherwise disrupt the orderly conduct of the meeting. Any person engaging in conduct that disrupts the meeting is subject to being removed from the board meeting. And finally, if you witness conduct or behavior by other members of the public that disrupts your ability to remain engaged or participate in this meeting, please notify the Sergeant-at-Arms or other county staff. Thank you for your cooperation.
Today, we'll begin with Item 7, then public hearing Items 4 and 6, then Set Matter 1, which will be taken up at or afternoon, and finishing with Item 9, followed by general public comment. Before we begin with our public hearing items, Executive Officer, please read the call-in information that was also provided on our agenda and explain our speaking rules.
For members of the public wishing to participate remotely, as indicated on the agenda, please call 877-692-8955, and use participate code number 4433663. Members of the public participating remotely and in the boardroom, you will have the opportunity to address the board throughout the meeting. You will receive up to one minute to address the board on each of the public hearing and held items, and one additional minute for general public comment. Please note, once your time has expired, we will immediately move to the next speaker. For members of the public joining us remotely, when the board moves to the item you wish to address, promptly press 1, then 0 to be entered into the speaking queue. Remember to turn down the volume on your device as soon as the moderator calls on you, or there will be an echo. You will need to press 1, then 0 for each item on which you would like to speak. To ensure we hear from both in-person and telephonic speakers, we will alternate between the two speaking queues. Members of the public who are in attendance, when you hear or see your name displayed on the screen, please come down to the front of the room, and staff will assist you. Please do not approach the podium until directed to do so.
Executive Officer, please swear in the members of the public who are requesting to address the board on public hearing items.
Members of the public, including in-person and remote speakers who are requesting to address the board in the public hearing items, please stand and raise your right hand to be sworn in. Please note that in the testimonial you give before this board, you solemnly swear to tell us truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
We'll begin with Item 7, Ratification of Proclamation of Local Emergency for the Bridge Fire, which was held by Supervisor Barker. For members of the public on the telephone, please press 1 then 0 now to comment on this item. Kevin McGowan, our Director of the Office of Emergency Management, as well as the Chief Executive Office, as well as Chief Deputy John O'Brien from our Fire Department, are available for questions. Supervisor Barker, I'll turn it to you.
Thank you. And before I start, I just have to publicly thank the men and women, not only of LA County Fire, but of fire departments across the state, both on the federal level, Cal Fire, for the work they've done. I mean, this fire, all in the 5th District, the impact it's had on wildlife, but also on life and property of individuals up in Mount Baldy and Wrightwood is something that I know all the firefighters take to heart. So I want to thank you and your agency for the work you've done, Chief O'Brien, and also Kevin McGowan. Every time we have an emergency, you always make me proud. The way you stand up the Emergency Operations Center and you communicate in real time what is going on, both with this board, but also with the public, is not lost on me. I want to publicly thank you for being a true leader and being someone that I know has a respect of all the agencies that you work with because of the fact that you stand ready with your team, and you have an incredible team when we face these horrific emergencies that we've seen, both in my district, but I know Supervisor Han, what's going on down in the Pacific Palace Verdes, and across the board. So I just want to publicly thank you for that. I have just two questions, and one is for Chief O'Brien, and then one is for Kevin McGowan. And that is, Chief O'Brien, when will repopulation in the evacuated areas occur? And then what resources will be available on the grounds for residents as they return? Because I know there's been reports out there that you're allowing people back in, but I want to just better understand how this all gets rolled out.
Yes, Supervisor. So the repopulation of both the Wrightwood and Baldy communities, and when I say Wrightwood, I'm talking Wrightwood proper. Big Pine will be a little bit beyond this because that is still the active edge of the fire, is slated to occur today at 2:00 PM. The department, working with our partners at OEM, the American Red Cross Department of Mental Health, have put together a robust plan to be in the Baldy community when those occupants are allowed back in, when those residents are allowed back into that community to be there for them and offer the support and assistance they need. to be there for them and offer the support and assistance they need. We will have our Community Services Liaison for the area, our Assistant Chief for the area, as well as a strike team of engines up there to kind of help those folks as they go in and start to accept their new reality of what's left for those that did lose structures. We'll be there to help them sift through what's remaining, so if there's anything valuable that they need to obtain or would like to look for, we're going to provide that assistance. And then we'll have the Red Cross up there, and then OEM, our partners at OEM, will be up there to kind of talk about the road to recovery and what is available to them.
So how are we communicating that to people that have lost structures? Is there a website? Is it going to be on your website in terms of how they can get access to their property or who they need to contact?
So immediately, I mean, it's a multi-tiered approach, so immediately following the fire, we brought out damage inspection assessment teams. They were out and have been canvassing the area, and thus far, they're about 90% done with their assessments of the area and looking at all the structures that were damaged and destroyed. We've worked hand in hand with our OEM partners from both LA County and San Bernardino County to populate maps online, so residents have been able to zoom in and kind of get a specific indication of how their structure fared through the fire. And then, the incident being managed under unified command. The Public Information Office has been getting information out there, and that information is all linked to the LA County, as well as San Bernardino County OEM webpages providing that information and updates. In addition to that, there's been two community meetings that have been held, one up in Phalen, and then last night in Lidle Creek. And LA County Fire, both Fire and OEM and sheriffs were active participants in all of those meetings.
Thank you. And to you, Kevin, when do the early stages, or I'm sorry, what do the early stages of recovery look like? And where can we direct residents who are in need of recovery assistance? That's a question I get, and actually, I just talked to the press this morning about that. And how do they go about accessing assistance?
Thank you, Supervisor. First and foremost, thanks to you, the whole board, the CEO's office for the leadership, and then also a big shout-out to all of our county departments. When this fire first started, we immediately started hosting our Unified Coordination Group, so just a big thanks to all of our teammates throughout the county, because this is a whole of community and a whole of government response when we have these disasters. Recovery started when the fire started. We already started projecting, if we were going to get damages, what that would look like. Unfortunately, this isn't an uncommon experience for our county, so we have a pretty good place to start from with our experiences from the Bobcat Fire, the Lake Fire, the Woolsey Fire. And we used a lot of that to model what our recovery is going to look like. So, really, to put a fine point on it, when we're in this transitional phase from response to recovery, we do some immediate actions, the stabilizing the site to then do repopulation with that support teams, a huge first step. We also initiate local assistance centers. Those will be communicated probably today and tomorrow, what the actual date and location's going to be, but going back to what Chief O'Brien was saying, this is a unified approach with our San Bernardino County partners. So we're going to have one local assistance center in the LA County area that's going to be more on the front countryside, where the San Gabriel cities are. And then, there will probably be another local assistance center more on the San Bernardino County side towards the Wrightwood area. And so, we'll be communicating that out. Those are our two first, like stabilizing recovery aspects. Then we go into our larger recovery task force model. We're going to have six or five recovery task force groups that focus on economic recovery, watershed hazard assessment. So following these burns in these large mountainous areas, we now start already planning for what our winter storm impacts are going to be as far as mud flows and debris flows. Health and social services, debris removal and rebuild is going to be a massive undertaking in this environment. And then lastly, our natural and cultural resource impact. So, we have already stood those task forces up. They're led by county departments, they're coordinated by OEM, and it's in partnership with our state and federal partners also. And then lastly, there's an ongoing effort to take the initial damage information that the fire departments are doing. Then we layer that onto what we call preliminary damage assessments with our state and federal partners to start looking at getting the state and federal assistance that we hope we're able to get. That's going to be an ongoing process. It usually takes a few weeks for us to go through that. And then just, I would ask that everyone have patience through what is a long road to recovery, but we put our heart and soul into it, and we'll get it done.
Thank you. And then, if we get calls, especially in the rural areas where someone wants to, who's lost a structure, and I actually personally know two individuals who lost their structure, lost their homes, if they want to park an RV on, because they have no place to live, do they need to file an application or a permit, or how is that going to roll out? And I know we're going to be getting requests.
Definitely. So, our Department of Regional Planning is a part of the Debris Removal and Rebuild Task Force. We will have specific information on our website and at the local assistance center on where we're at with that. Fortunately, regional planning came to this board and got it approved with the disaster ordinance, and so we have a lot of those tools. It's just a matter of us, over the next week, getting those tools all put into place. And again, I'll reemphasize, everyone at this stage should go to recovery.lacounty.gov/bridgefire. So that's the recovery website. You can also just Google or Bing "recovery bridge fire," and it will send you to it.
And I'll have it on my website as well, so thank you for that. I want to acknowledge Governor Newsom, because I know that we did our declaration, but he also did declaration. Is that, that's going to help us draw down the resources in a more of a real-time fashion, correct? Because I think that's what was the announcement was.
So we had two great things that followed our proclamation, which was, we were approved for a fire management assistance grant, so a big shout-out to County Fire to get that submitted right away. And then there's a lot of strong coordination between Fire, OEM, and CAL ES. So we got that approved. That covers recovery costs for governmental agencies for emergency response. In addition to that, when the governor proclaims, that's what initiates our ability to work with CAL ES and the county to do these damage assessments and seek financial recovery for both potentially individuals and governmental agencies through the Disaster Assistance Act, or potentially, if we were able to get a federal declaration. To manage expectations, the size, scope, and scale of what we're seeing right now is not going to probably be eligible for a major disaster declaration, but we'll work with the state, and we're going to try and maximize every opportunity we have.
Including mutual aid. I mean, you figure that in as well?
Yep.
What's the threshold to?
So for LA County, we're a roughly $46 million threshold. In addition to, I mean, I guess, to be very tangible, like with the Woolsey Fire, we had over 1,600 residences destroyed. Bobcat Fire, we had over 250 residences destroyed. Those are the scales that we're talking about usually to get a major disaster declaration. And we're not, we're not even half, to the halfway point on that, which is a good thing, right? We don't want major damage, but it is a pretty large threshold for LA County to meet.
Okay. Well, you know, on September 8th, and actually, it was nine days ago, the bridge fire ignited in the Angeles National Forest and rapidly spread to surrounding areas in LA County. The bridge fire has burned over 54,000 acres so far, and has necessitated evacuations of county residents, which led to major road closures. And I want to acknowledge Public Works, who worked with you as well, power disruption, acknowledge Edison and the collaboration we've had, and required evacuee and pet sheltering operations. And to your point, Kevin, animal care and control was incredible with helping us put together plans. So far, a total of 63 structures have been damaged or destroyed. I want to take a moment to express my deep appreciation for the first responders who have been tackling this fire. And we've had resources spread thin, because we had fires in Riverside and San Bernardino, and so it's not like we could draw from our traditional partners. And so it's not lost on me that many of these firefighters have gotten little, if any, sleep, and have been away from their homes for a considerable amount of time fighting all these fires. I'm grateful for the dedication of our firefighters from the Los Angeles County Fire Department, San Bernardino County Fire Department, US Forest Service, and CAL Fire. I'm also thankful for the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department for helping to quickly evacuate residents and for continuing to keep our communities out of harm way. I'd also like to thank the Los Angeles County Office of Emergency Management for your assistance during this incident, and of course, the American Red Cross, who immediately stepped in to address evacuation, individuals who've had to evacuate their homes, and provided trauma-informed services to help support them in a time of need. And I want to acknowledge the Fairplex and the Antelope Valley Fairgrounds for providing a location for people to come if they needed to find a place to stay. Due to the devastating impact of the bridge fire, on September 10th, Chair Horvath, and I want to thank you, Chair Horvath, for proclaiming the existence of a local emergency for the bridge fire in the county. The proclamation of a local emergency enables the county to more effectively respond to the bridge fire, accelerate the procurement of vital supplies, seek and utilize mutual aid, and potentially obtain reimbursement and assistance from the state and the federal government. Governor Newsom has also proclaimed a state of emergency, and again, I want to publicly thank him and his team for doing so. I'm grateful that this issue, that this proclamation was issued. By doing so, he's rightfully elevating the urgency that's needed to mobilize more resources so we can quickly and effectively combat this unpredictable wildfire and help survivors rebuild. My heart does go out to everyone who has lost property or has been displaced by what is now the largest wildfire burning in our state. We still don't have a clear understanding of the bridge fire's impact, but undoubtedly, there will be a need for support at many levels as our recovery efforts ramp up. I also want to say that when we talk about partnerships, I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge Glendora, Laverne, and all the cities that within the 5th that I work with who partnered with us, because there, many don't realize that while it was in the forest, it impacted homes that were up against the forest, many, and I think Laverne was under a threat of possible evacuation, as was parts of Glendora. So I want to acknowledge the city managers and the city councils for their work, working with us. So with that, colleagues, I ask for your support in ratifying this emergency proclamation. And again, proud, unfortunately, that we had to have it during this, but I'm proud of the team that we have together, and I'm grateful for the hard work that men and women do in LA County. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Solis.
Yes, thank you, and kudos to Supervisor Barker, and also to both of you for being there and just assisting overall. I think we really dodged a bullet, because it could have been a lot worse, and we were, I know, on pins and needles in the area of Azusa and some of the other outer-lined areas, and was happy that the Fairplex opened up their facility to, I think, allow for over 40 horses and donkeys to be sheltered in place. And there were about five people who actually ended up going there. I don't know how long they stayed, but nonetheless, just having that resource and the coordination, I really do want to salute the National Forest Service, the federal government, because they were, I mean, this is something that they prepare for, but they don't do it alone. And obviously, we have the boots on the ground, so the firefighters, the sheriff, and also San Bernardino County firefighters, as well as Laverne PD and all the other city entities. I know we even had conversations with our city manager in Azusa if there was a need to be able to open up more shelter, but that didn't happen, which is great. And I really want to applaud the governor and the chair and the board for moving fast on this proclamation so we can draw down funding to provide relief for those essential services that were in play. So, my best wishes to the firefighters, to the sheriffs, to everyone, because I know sometimes we don't get enough sleep. We can see that, but let them know we are all very, so much appreciative. Thank you. And I hope that this reminds us of climate change and the need to be very, very diligent in the years to come and the months ahead of us, and that one of our treasures, the San Gabriel Monument, the mountains, that were declared a monument in the past few years, is now going to have to go through some healing. And we all should be mindful of that, because that, for many of us, is our playground, our own backyard. So let us not forget that, but also the fact that we're able to work together to help contain and prevent loss of life. So thank you, both, and all that helped out with that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Mitchell.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I just want to echo the comments made by my colleagues acknowledging your work. You know, there was a time when we had a fire season in California, and those days clearly are behind us. And so, I certainly am hoping, I'm appreciative of the declarations of emergency that allows resources to flow. And I hope that we are mindful of the reality of it's no longer a season, but it is a constant state. And to really be clear about those thresholds that trigger, if you will, state and federal assistance, because I'm concerned that there may, we may find ourselves at times when we don't meet those thresholds, and yet you have to have the resources. And as you talked about, all of those other county departments that are going to avail themselves, you know, Animal Services, Health, Mental Health, all of those departments. And so I want us to be mindful in our own budgeting that we no longer have a fire season, but this is our now constant state of affairs. I certainly understood and learned firsthand that threshold with the mudslides in my own district, and so all of these disasters that are coming at us left and right because of climate change, Supervisor, we have to be vigilant and mindful. And I really encourage the residents of our county to understand, this is the function of government. While people may have their opinion of what government does or doesn't do, it is government that comes in at a time of crisis, and when people are looking to government to assist them. When you talk about debris removal and utilities and help with insurance claims, so I want to just echo all of the acknowledgement of the amazing work you do. You know, emergencies are a constant state, and you all are nimble and respond and gather the resources, have the pre-existing relationships with the multiple levels of government, local, state, and federal. So we see you, we acknowledge you, and thank you, and know that we, as a board, are going to continue to do our work to support you in the work you do to support our shared constituency. So thank you very much.
I too want to echo my colleagues' thanks and acknowledgement for your hard work, especially as Chair, when Kevin calls, it's the call you better take, because you never know what it is and how you need to step up and be helpful. So thank you, Kevin, and to your entire team for the role that you played in making sure everyone was informed and coordinated. Thank you, of course, to our fire department, who are fearless in the face of tragic circumstances, and just really committed to making sure that everyone is able to stay safe and supported. And the ways that you work with your fellow teams up and down the state who come in to provide that aid, I know it's no easy task, can only imagine what it's like to face it directly, and I thank you and the entire department for stepping up and supporting the region. Thank you. And with that, Executive Officer, please call the members of the public who have signed up to speak on this item.
Madam Chair, there are no in-person speakers signed up for this item. As a final reminder for participants on the telephone, if you would like to address Item 7, if you have not already done so, please press 1 then 0 now to be placed in the speaking queue. Moderator, may we have the first remote speaker, please?
Thank you. Our first participant is Roy Humphries. Your line is open. If you're muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
An underfunded object failure in transient habitat management. For more information and enforcement, subscribe to Thomas Sowell TV.
Is that the end of your comment, Mr. Humphries? Okay, Speaker, or Moderator, we'll go to our next caller.
And currently, no further comments in queue.
All right. Then Item 7 is before us. Moved by Supervisor Barker. I will second to approve the item. Executive Officer, please call the role.
Supervisor Solis?
Aye.
Supervisor Solis, aye. Supervisor Mitchell?
Aye.
Supervisor Mitchell, aye. Supervisor Barker?
Aye.
Supervisor Barker, aye. Supervisor Horvath?
Aye.
Supervisor Horvath, aye. Motion carries, 4 to 0.
We'll now move on to Item 4. For members of the public on the telephone, please press 1 then 0 now to comment on this item. Executive Officer, please read in the short title.
Item 4 is a hearing on the appeal of project number PRJ 2021-002011 to create a residential planned development of 360 units, including 82 affordable units and 28 acres of publicly accessible privately-owned open space and trail areas on 75.6 privately-owned open space and trail areas on 75.65 gross acres on a portion of a former golf course located at the 2100 block of Colima Road in 19816 Walnut Drive and the unincorporated community of Roland Heights in the San Jose and Walnut Zone districts, applied for by RV Dev LLC. A departmental statement was submitted and correspondence was received.
I will first turn it to Supervisor Solis.
Yes, Madam Chair, as was stated earlier, I wanted to report that I have to leave the meeting at 11:00 AM today, and I do want to note that we have several people I know in the audience and probably in the queue that will be calling in. So I want to make clear, if possible, that if we could maybe hear at least an opening statement by Amy Bodek and perhaps the applicant and appellant before I have to leave, and then I want to come back and present a motion so that we can continue this hearing, so there'll be at least an opportunity to hear everyone at the next date that we set. Thank you.
I'll turn it to Director Bodek.
Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you very much. I appreciate your attendance today and related to this project. It is a significant project in the Roland Heights community. This is actually a subdivision that would convert a portion of a private golf course to a 360-home subdivision project. This entails a zone change, a general plan amendment, a vesting tentative tract map, a conditional use permit, and an administrative housing permit. What's interesting mostly about this project is it's 360 residential homes. They are all ownership homes, and 82 of those homes would be affordable under our Inclusionary Housing Ordinance. This represents the largest affordable housing ownership opportunity in the county in the six years that I have been with the county, so it is a very significant project in that regard. We've spent a couple of years working on this project. We are very confident in the approvals and ask that you uphold the Planning Commission's unanimous decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other supervisors in the queue, we will first call the appellant's representative, Ron Ewing, Ren Ewing, excuse me, speaking on behalf of Royal Vista Open Space, who will be given a total of two minutes.
Good morning, Supervisors. Royal Vista Open Space challenges the approval of the project and the Regional Planning Commission's reliance on a fatally flawed EIR that must be revised and recirculated for additional comment to be compliant with the CEQA guidelines. Recital 55 of the vesting tentative tract maps finding, it's concluded that the commission, quote, "finds the design of the subdivision or proposed improvements are not likely to cause substantial environmental damage or substantially and unavoidably injure fish, wildlife, or their habitat. However, this finding was an error and is not supported by substantial evidence." Issues in the extensive comment letter written for the DEAR by Channel Law Group were not all addressed, and the commission certified the FEIR, an inadequate environmental clearance document. Recital 48 of the commission's finding concluded that, quote, "use at the site will not adversely affect the health, peace, comfort, or welfare of persons residing or working in the surrounding area, will not be materially detrimental to the use, enjoyment, or valuation of property of other persons located in the vicinity of the site, and will not jeopardize, endanger, or otherwise constitute a menace to the public health, safety, or general welfare." This finding was an error and not supported by substantial evidence as explained in the appellant's DEIR comment letter for the following. One, aesthetic impacts. Two, air quality impacts. Three, construction emissions. Four, localized pollutant concentrations. Five, toxic air contaminants. Six, valley fever. Seven, deo-technical impacts. Eight, noise and vibration. And nine, flawed cumulative impact analysis of the Sunjoint Project of 1,591 units on the adjacent land. The county's response was dismissive and did not meaningfully respond to all citations. The project will also have a significant impact on both light and air. Due to these impacts, the project does not provide for public safety and the preservation of the welfare of the community. For these reasons, this appeal should be granted. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, the applicant John Conk on behalf of RV Dev LLC, which will be given a total of two minutes. Please begin.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Supervisors. I'm John Conk and represent the Royal Vista Residential Project. The appeal before you today lacks merit. It fails to produce any new evidence necessitating the final EIR to be recirculated under the provisions of CEQA. The appellant has not provided any evidence that the environmental impacts they claim will actually occur, nor have they offered any credible expert testimony or demonstrated any genuine expertise related to the subject matter of their appeal. Conversely, there is ample credible evidence in the administrative record that refutes all of the appellant's claims. Now to the facts before you today. We are in a housing crisis. This is a well-designed and much-needed infill housing project. It includes a diverse mix of 360 for-sale home products with 82 affordable, missing-middle homes for workforce housing and first-time homebuyers. We exceed the county's Inclusionary Housing Ordinance requirements. Since the start of the IHO in 2020, only one project with just two units that were inclusionary for-sale homes have been approved in this submarket area. Our project will add 82 additional homes to that count. A lack of new housing in this area has negatively impacted the Roland Unified School District, where enrollment is down 20% over the last 10 years. The district needs more students, and our project will help provide them. We also exceed county requirements for open space. We have 28 acres with over two miles of publicly accessible trails for equitable recreation and outdoor opportunities. We have done substantial community outreach since 2021, and we have gained broad public support, including letters from Senator Bob Archileta, BizFed, the San Gabriel Valley Economic Partnership, the Regional Chamber of Commerce, Tri-County's Association of Realtors, the Building Industry Association, Roland Unified School District, Caltrans, and many hundreds of individuals, local employees, and employers. This project will result in a net benefit to the county and the community. Please deny the appeal and uphold the RPC's unanimous approval of the project permits and certification of the final EIR, and please approve the zone change and general plan amendment allowing this project to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Recognizing the time, I see that we have many speakers in queue virtually and here with us, but I want to turn it to Supervisor Solis.
Yes. Thank you, and I want to apologize to the individuals that came out here today, but I do have to leave at 11:00. What I'd like to do is present a motion to keep the public hearing open and continue this item till October the 1st, 2024. That will be our next board meeting, where we can have ample time to hear the pros and cons of the project and allow me to speak at length regarding this project. And it has been many years working on this. I do want to echo that. Amy Bodek, thank you for your help and your staff, and to all the residents that have been involved in this discussion. So with that, Madam Chair, you have a motion, I believe, that we're going to have a motion before us to leave the public hearing open for Item 4 and continue the item to the board meeting on October the 1st, 2024. I'd like to move that item.
Okay, thank you, Supervisor Solis. Mr. County Counsel, is there any guidance that we need to know of, given that the public hearing will remain open until that time?
No, Chair. The motion is before you, and it just needs a roll call vote, please.
Okay, thank you. With that, we have a motion before us to leave the public hearing open for Item 4 and continue the item to the board meeting of October 1st, 2024. Moved by Supervisor Solis, and I will second. Executive Officer, please call the roll.
Supervisor Solis?
Aye.
Supervisor Solis, aye. Supervisor Mitchell?
Aye.
Supervisor Mitchell, aye. Supervisor Barker?
Aye.
Supervisor Barker, aye. Supervisor Horvath?
Aye.
Supervisor Horvath, aye. Motion carries four to zero.
Okay, so that item will be continued. Thank you for all who joined us for that. We'll now move on to Item 6. For members of the public on the telephone, please press 1 then 0 now to comment on this item. Executive Officer, please read in the short title.
Item 6 is a hearing on a Short-Term Rentals Ordinance Amendment, project number PRJ 2023-002077, on proposed amendments to County Code Title 22, Planning and Zoning, to ensure consistency and facilitate the implementation of the county's short-term rentals ordinance established in Division 3, Short-Term Rentals Registration of Title VII, Business Licenses of the County Code. No departmental statement was submitted and correspondence was received.
Are there any supervisors who would like to comment on this item? Seeing none, Executive Officer, please call the members of the public who have signed up to speak on this item.
Will the following individuals please come forward, and staff will assist you. Noah Suarez-Sikes, Noel Weiss. As a final reminder for participants on the telephone, if you would like to address Item 6, if you have not already done so, please press 1 then 0 now to be placed in the speaking queue. Moderator, may we have the first remote speaker, please?
Madam Chair, at this time, we have no remote speakers in queue to address the board.
All right. With that, it would be appropriate to close the public hearing and vote on this item. Item 6 is before us. Oh, we do have in-person. My apologies, sir. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Supervisor. Happy birthday to Supervisor Mitchell. My, this is just on this item. Public comment is later. Is that the way that it works?
This is on this item.
Yes, okay. The short-term rentals, I support. I note that the short-term rental issue with regard to Marina Del Rey is excluded from the proposed ordinance. That's relevant because Marina, because the county owns that land, the county is the landlord, the county is the proprietor, and there have been some disputes concerning the provision of short-term rental services at Shores Apartment Project. And we're now basically in a situation where it's kind of hard to believe that the county is going to forego rentals and TOT income if, in fact, short-term rentals are not done at the Marina and specifically at this project. And we, there's a need for arbitration, there's a need for renegotiation of that lease, and I put before the board this idea that perhaps we need to move forward along those lines, and I appreciate your attention. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Good morning, Supervisors. Happy birthday, Supervisor Mitchell. My name's Noah Suarez-Sikes. I'm an organizer for Better Neighbors LA, a coalition focused on preserving long-term housing by curbing illegal short-term rental activity in LA. So I'm here to speak on Item 6. The underlying short-term rental registration ordinance unanimously passed earlier this year is urgently needed. BNLA has worked with LA County residents who have seen increased displacement caused by an unregulated short-term rental industry. Since 2019, unhoseded STR listings in unincorporated LA County have grown by 132%. This has serious consequences for residents. According to a study by Professor David Walksmith of McGill University, residents of the city of LA see an annual $810 a year increase in their rents due to the economic factors associated with short-term rentals, the same factors that are likely at play in unincorporated LA County. The changes to Title 22 recommended today mark the culmination of years of discussion and effort and will be vital in protecting residents of unincorporated LA County. They'll also serve as a model for cities and counties across Southern California. We commend the County Board of Supervisors for having reached this point.
Thank you very much. We now have one speaker in the queue. Moderator, please go ahead.
Our first participant is Mr. Eric Previn. Your line is open. If you're muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Yeah, it's Eric Previn, and I'm upset because I've been in the queue for each of these items, including the fire department one, which was so important because our brave first responders have done such a good job during these fires, and I know that a lot of them are also against a CEO that's elected and the insane power play by Lindsay Horvath.
This item is on Short-Term Rental Ordinance Amendment before us. If you could focus your comments on that item since this is a public hearing.
Right. There's a short-term attention problem on the Airbnb stuff because you've not been able to grant access to people who want to speak on the other items. You're pretending that we're not here. So we are here, and Airbnb has done a great job in the community, and I know you remember David Rue and his sidekick, who's now your chief of staff, and you're doing a really, really good job of holding off public criticism during this important time in America for the Airbnb people. So thank you, Lindsay, for doing such a great job, but honestly, you should play by the fair rules that the people expect. That would be more appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Madam Chair, there are no other remote speakers in the queue to address the board.
At this time, it would be appropriate to close the public hearing and vote on this item. Item 6 is before us. Move, I will move it, seconded by Supervisor Mitchell to approve the item. Executive Officer, please call the roll.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Aye.
Supervisor Mitchell, aye. Supervisor Barker?
Aye.
Supervisor Barker, aye. Supervisor Horvath?
Aye.
Supervisor Horvath, aye. Motion carries three to zero.
We'll now move on. I believe Set Matter 1 does not come up for another hour, so we will turn to Item 9. Report on the progress of enhancing stabilization supports for foster youth. For members of the public on the telephone, please press 1 then 0 now to comment on this item. Jenny Feria, Chief Deputy Director Zeneta Smith, Division Chief, Department of Children and Family Services. Dr. Lisa Wong, Director of Mental Health. Deborah Coleman, Director, Office of the Advancement of Early Care and Education. Department of Public Health will make a presentation. Kelly Lobionco, Director of Economic Opportunity. Emilio Salas, Executive Director, Los Angeles County Development Authority. And Sharon Kokan, Director of Los Angeles County Workforce Development Board, are also available for questions, and I hope they are joining us.
I'm looking for them. Standby. Okay, they're on their way. I'll make some, maybe make some remarks, and then I've got questions.
Absolutely. Please go ahead.
Okay, I'll fill the void. The needs of our foster youth are great, and what I've heard is that despite the existence of some county programs, our youth and social workers either are not aware of the programs, or the application process is difficult and lengthy, or there are not enough slots in programs for the number of foster youth and families that we are serving. Through this motion, we are recognizing that work is underway, and there are always additional ways to get information, training, and programs to the appropriate people. Sometimes even our contractors are not aware of all we have to offer, and we should push to constantly think of our end users and how they will use and prioritize information in a busy workday. I want to lift up the work being done by the county and the city partners to expand housing options for TEA youth, something that we just are going to be dedicating in Pasadena, with working with Pasadena City College, housing for our TEA youth, because without stable housing options, utilizing other supports may be difficult or, quite frankly, impossible. Providing appropriate training and updating our trainings to reflect new information is important, both for our own employees, but also for our contractors. When we're all on the same page, it's easier to provide equivalent offerings regardless of geographic locations. We've also got some good news about stable childcare bridge funding for our foster families, which was ultimately not cut in the state budget as originally proposed. These childcare programs aren't a necessity for those families that have young children placed with them unexpectedly, and we want to help them to thrive. Working in tandem with the Childcare Association of Los Angeles, we want to ensure that all families receive affordable childcare who need it. Unfortunately, there is a lack of trained workers for the childcare and human services careers. We've seen that firsthand in the Antelope Valley, which is why I championed a pilot program that provided funding and training through the Childcare Resource Center that could provide them with immediate employment in the childcare field after completing their training. And that is, this is why I want to see more resources brought to areas like the Antelope Valley for workforce programs by the Department of Economic Opportunities. I look forward to hearing about our outcomes and goals so that we can track how we are expanding programs to our families served. And I have some questions. Is that be okay, Madam Chair? And I want to thank you all for being here. And my first question is to DCFS. For the new TEA housing pilot, I think it's Ms. Smith, right, yeah. For the new TEA housing pilot with LA County, LACTA, this is, that is proposed to launch in October of 2024, how many beds will be provided for foster youth? We'll turn on your mic there. There you go. And thank you for being here.
You're so welcome. It's my honor and privilege. I started two months ago.
Welcome.
I'm excited to be supporting.
How do you say your first name?
Zeneta.
Zeneta, okay.
Yes, I'm excited to be supporting children and families and to really continue on finding innovative solutions and partnerships. For that new pilot, we are very excited about. It is with LACTA. It will be facilitated by Coalition for Responsible Community Development. There will be 10 to 15 beds in year one.
Great, and I just was told that there's a PowerPoint that you all want to provide?
Yes.
Okay, who's going to, who's going to lead on that? Great. Sorry about that.
Deborah Coleman, and also DMH Deputy, sorry, Senior Deputy Director Mary Barazza. And then also present are our partners from DEO and LACTA that will be available to answer any questions you may have. So we are here to address the board. Motion on stabilization supports for foster youth. Next slide, please. Directive one is for DCFS, DHS, and other appropriate departments to report back on plans to increase access to housing for TAE by identifying ways to enhance housing for TAE, including utilization of housing navigators and also prioritizing housing for expectant and parenting youth. Next slide. So we understand the importance of improving access to housing. When our young adults have a place to lay their heads down at night and a place to call home, they're better prepared to succeed. So now I'm going to hand it over to Zenetta, who's going to go into more detail about Directive one.
Awesome. Thank you, Jenny. So we understand the importance of improving access to housing, and via our partnership with the Center for Strategic Partnerships, we have enhanced our housing through various means. One of them is the Stepping Stones Program. It's a bridge housing program for NMD who are exiting care and have no identified housing plan. Safe Place for Youth is the CBO. We partner with these efforts. They provide the housing navigation services to secure more permanent housing. We also have our Expectant and Parenting Youth Program. It was launched last October in partnership with St. Anne's. We provide up to $5,000 in one-time financial assistance to pregnant and parenting young adults aged 18 to 26 who have closed cases for various purposes, including security deposits, rental assistance, childcare supportive services, and more. St. Anne's also provides housing navigation for TAE. Our FYI vouchers are being utilized at a 90% plus rate, which exceeds the HUD standards. The slide you see displays which PHAs have applied and ones who are in the process of applying. We love our partnership with DHS, and we have an MOU with them for housing navigation services that is utilized for assisting FYI voucher recipients with identifying housing. DHS provides intensive case management services to assist voucher holders for up to 36 months, and this funding is provided by the state. Coming soon, as Supervisor Barker mentioned earlier, we have a new TAE housing pilot that will launch in partnership with LACTA and Coalition for Responsible Community Development that will be in Spasix. The program will offer 24 months of rapid rehousing and supportive services for exiting TAE, and that will include expectant and parenting youth as well. The Supportive Housing Division staff continue to support and participate with the regional offices and TAE exit meetings to promote housing options and connecting TAE to housing services. Now I'm going to pass it over to Dr. Wong, our DMH partner, for the next slide.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you to our board for this opportunity to share about how the Department of Mental Health has been in continual collaboration with DCFS in expanding awareness of mental health programs, developing career pathways, and supporting the needs of youth who have experienced trauma, particularly the needs of pregnant and parenting foster youth. So first, I'd like to begin by sharing information about trauma-informed mental health trainings that are related to serving children and youth. Our department has a robust training selection that offers training that is trauma-informed, culturally responsive, and youth-centered. And these training opportunities are offered to our partners, such as DCFS, and are available to other providers in our network as well. In a snapshot of two calendar years, 2022 and 2023, we had 41 training titles related to this topic that were offered, and of these, 536 independent trainings were provided. Additionally, some of these and other current on-demand prerecorded webinars are available on our Child Welfare Division public-facing webpage. In May 2024, DMH partnered with DCFS to launch a training curriculum for DCFS and contracted TSFC staff on managing the effects of trauma. This training is delivered in person across all TSCFs, and this training has received positive feedback from residential teams across our shelter community. And since I'm on the topic of training, I'll begin to discuss the next topic related to maternal mental health support by sharing that the maternal mental health champions in our network and our specialty clinical teams, serving expectant mothers and mothers with young children, are extensively trained in perinatal mental health. So these teams complete a series of training, which includes Perimental Mental Health 101, which provides an overview of the symptoms and impacts of perinatal mood and anxiety disorders on the mother, infant, and family; and Perinatal Mental Health 201 provides a deeper understanding of perinatal mood and anxiety disorders and identifies ways of responding to the disorders in a timely, informed, and culturally appropriate way. The perinatal mental health trainings are voluntary and available to all our DMH staff and providers, and beginning in July 2024, these were expanded to include our DCFS and probation partners. The maternal mental health support system is also robust in providing specialized referrals, individual therapy, support groups, and maternal mental health champions in each service area who liaises between DMH and the community. Depending on the focus need, a service area may offer support for moms with toddlers up to age 18 months, African-American intergenerational groups for women, or mommy-and-me programs. Many of these programs across our network also collaborate with local healthcare providers to offer specialized case management support and support groups to mothers and their children in the community through children's outpatient clinics and through the well-established DCFS/DMH child welfare intake process, which provides early identification of the need for specialized services. Finally, a new resource which landed in July 2024 established a provider-to-provisor consultation and linkage line by the name of PROMIS, Perinatal Resources to Optimize Mental Health Interventions and Substance Use Treatment Excellence. I know that's a lot. This coordinated effort between DMH and DHS is where primary providers of prenatal and postpartum care can get assistance in how to treat perinatal patients who may be experiencing substance use and/or mental health symptoms. And providers can consult on cases related to assessment, diagnosing, treatment, resources, and medication. And this is heavily pushed out to our DCFS partners to benefit the population. Okay, next slide, please. In this section, I will enthusiastically share how DMH is working internally and in collaboration with our agency partners in building and expanding new pathways to career opportunities, peer-to-peer mentorship, or workforce development for young adults with lived experience. First, to increase recruitment efforts of college students interested in career and community mental health, we are partnering with DHR. Our department has formed partnerships with community colleges to develop internship opportunities to eligible students, and we're working with our Workforce Education Training Division for anticipated launch of the internship program in the spring semester of 2025. In addition, the department's collaborating with DEO, Public and Community Partners, L.A. Youth Collaborative, WorkSource Centers, California Trust, Public Works Alliance, L.A. Unified, El Centro de Ayuda, and West Coast Central Clinic on the Peer Specialist Demonstration Project. The project is aimed at supporting training in peer mental health for L.A. County youth specifically. Through this effort, DMH will be hosting hiring fairs to recruit and hire mental health advocates, community health workers, who complete the program and obtain their mental health certification. Our department's peer services, human resources, and prevention teams are working to coordinate a hiring fair set for this fall. Finally, the Youth Facilitator Child-Family Team, CFT Pilot Program, is a collaborative effort with our partners at DCFS and the Office of Child Protection. The program's focus is training youth with lived experience in the child welfare and our probation system in the integrated core practice model, child and family team, and facilitation of child-family team meetings. This program aims to train, engage, and support youth as facilitators at various levels of care within systems while providing them professional development opportunities and benefiting youth whom they will be supporting and advocating for in their paid youth facilitator role. We all know that this lived experience is the most valuable thing when we're working with the young people. In addition to being trained, youth facilitators will be mentored to engage other youth who have been detained or in the process of their initial assessment. They will also be tasked with preparing and educating the detained youth for their first CFT meeting, including helping the youth understand the CFT process and helping them identify key individuals they'd like to have participate in their CFT. Okay, next slide, please. Promoting the Who to Call Campaign. In July 2024, DMH launched the Who Do I Call for Help campaign in partnership with the Sheriff's Department, City of L.A., County of L.A. Fire Department, 211, and Didi Hirsch. And the campaign's aimed at increasing community awareness on the appropriate department and corresponding number to call based on the service needed. Also, in July 2024, DMH launched the newly-integrated L.A. County Health Line for Mental Health and Substance Use Services for easier access to mental health and substance use services. Thank you.
Directive three addresses, the state had proposed a $34.8 million decrease for fiscal year 2425 and ongoing for the Emergency Child Care Bridge Program for foster children. This program meets the childcare needs of children in home-based foster care settings, and the county successfully opposed the funding reduction. Yay. The 2024 State Budget Act reappropriated a total of $47 million from fiscal year 2324 into fiscal year 2425, which generates a state general fund savings for fiscal year 2425. And I'm happy to report that the $83.4 million each year will remain ongoing for the Emergency Child Care Bridge Program. And I'll pass it over to Deborah.
Thank you. Good morning, Supervisors, and thank you to Supervisor Barker and Supervisor Horvath for elevating childcare in this critical motion. So I will be speaking to Directive four. And we're just thrilled, on behalf of the early care and education community, that the county took off, up the position to support extending childcare bridge and opposing any potential cuts to the program. So now I'm going to share a little bit about the Bridge Emergency Child Care Program. So this is a fairly new program in terms of subsidized early care and education. It was established in 2018. It's about $32 million annually that's provided to L.A. County through the California Department of Social Services. Last year, the bridge program served over 1,000 families, and 58 of them were parenting foster youth. We've gotten some updated numbers, and we know 51 of those parents were unduplicated parenting foster youth. Now, how does bridge work? It really is an exceptional model of how we can support quick access to childcare services. So once a children's social worker identifies a need for childcare for a family they are working with, they put in a request in an online portal that's directed to our partners at the Childcare Alliance. And within 24 hours, a bridge navigator will get back to the family with information. And within two to five days, we have a very strong placement record of securing placement of childcare within two to five days through this program. Next slide, please. So although this is a very successful community-public partnership through both the Department of Children and Family Services and the Childcare Alliance of Los Angeles, we have come together under this motion to develop a five-point plan to strengthen the bridge program. The first strategy that we have already embarked on, and I'm very pleased to share that this is in motion, is expanding the ages of children served. Previously, the Emergency Child Care Bridge only served children birth through five. Over the past few months, this program has been expanded to now serve children up to age 12. And I'm pleased to share that the first referral for this new age range came on August 28th, so just a few weeks ago. Also, we are pleased to share that we will begin training of DCFS staff in the fall. We have a new training initiative under the Office for the Advancement of Early Care and Education that will be supporting county departments in better understanding the childcare system. And it is our hope that by increasing the confidence of our children's social workers about what the childcare system looks like and the settings available, they will be better able to support the families in their charge. Strategy three really builds on maximizing the existing partnerships between DCFS staff and bridge program navigators. Many of the 15 bridge navigators are co-located in the 19 regional DCFS offices. Now, we hope to really maximize that partnership by setting standing office hours where a staff member from the Department of Children and Family Services can come by and meet with a bridge navigator to better understand how the program works and to think about options for childcare opportunities. Strategy four really has a focus on a targeted outreach for our parenting foster youth as well as non-minor dependents. So with a very intentional strategy, DCFS is in the process of sharing a brochure with all of the regional offices, presenting at regional staff meetings, as well as conducting presentations at expectant and parenting group meetings. And finally, we know that trauma-informed care is infused throughout this presentation. One of the critical pieces of the bridge program is all childcare providers that are supporting families in Emergency Child Care Bridge are provided trauma-informed care training and coaching, and we will be enhancing that training with specific content about how to best support parenting foster youth. Thank you very much. And at this time, we will take any questions.
Supervisor Barker, go right ahead.
Thank you. I'll try to streamline. I mean, first of all, thank you. I, you know, this is something that came out of talks with foster youth that are actually in real time experiencing some of the challenges. And it was kind of a wake-up call that while it may be on paper, it's not being translated maybe to the social workers or even to the nonprofits in terms of how to access some of this care. And so, you know, I'm going to first direct to Lisa Wong. It seems like all roads lead back to mental health with you, and I know you're drinking out of a fire hose as it relates to just issues across the board. But for the existing internship opportunities, are you aware of how many foster youth are enrolled in our intern programs?
Yeah, the program is still in the very early stages, so I don't think we have the data yet. I know, Mary, if you have an update on that?
Yes, I agree. We are in the early stages, so we are working to see what, which foster youth are going to be. But this first cohort that we worked with was only eight youth, and our role as DMH was to do the recruitment and a hiring fair to be able to bring them in. So after the pilot, we plan to expand and make sure that foster youth are included in the expansion.
Thank you. And how are you working with the DEO to collaborate and ensure that some of these innovative programs
Yes, I agree. We are in the early stages, so we are working to see which foster youth are going to be. But this first cohort that we worked with was only eight youth. And our role as DMH was to do the recruitment and a hiring fair to be able to bring them in. So after the pilot, we plan to expand and make sure that foster youth are included in the expansion.
Thank you. And how are you working with the DEO to collaborate and ensure that some of these innovative programs may be eligible for federal funding through the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act?
Mary, would you like to?
Yes. So we've had a relationship with DEO actually since 2016. Under the My Brothers Keeper Initiative, we were working together with providing collaboration. From that, we had a program that was called the Youth Bridges Program, and that allowed youth who were interested in coming and working for the county and getting county employment an opportunity to come in and learn about Department of Mental Health. We were in partnership with a couple of other departments. The program was very successful. However, the funding wasn't available to support the resources that we needed for the program. Since that time, we reconnected with Department of Economic, the DEO used to be WEDEC, so I get it all confused. But we reconnected with DEO under this peer-to-peer demonstration project to try to at least bring the program back to some extent and be able to offer opportunities for youth who are interested and have taken the training and have passed their certification training to be able to come in, provide them additional support, provide them additional training so that they can become county employees.
Fantastic. And my question, I'm not going to ask each one individually, I think the theme of my next question is more about tracking data. So when you've got the Who to Call campaign, which has been launched, correct? Are we tracking the numbers coming in? And if not, we should because it'll tell us if there are barriers. Because again, what I'm hearing is whether it be on, even on the internship, how are we getting the word out to foster youth that there's opportunities? On the Paranatal Mental Health 101 and the Mental Health 201 training programs, how many people are utilizing it? And if the number's not where it should be, how are we rolling out the information to make sure that we are saturating both our social workers but also our youth about opportunities?
We do track the data on those programs. We're very big on data now. And we've actually expanded our informatics division too to accommodate that. What we've done is we've put it out through everything from our community advisory groups to social media and our partner agencies. But one of the things we're starting to do more intentionally is work with our community colleges because we find that the community colleges have been in such need of mental health support. You know, many of the college presidents have come to me and said that they feel that their youth there are in crisis and they need to know what to do about it. So for our next Take Action campaign, which is our May is Mental Health Month campaign, in fact, we have decided to focus on community colleges.
Good.
So that every directly operated event will be held on a community college campus.
Excellent. I know that at PCC, and I'm sure it's to other community colleges, they actually have a room dedicated to foster youth where they can come, a safe space where there's people there that can help them navigate things that we don't even understand as it relates to access to services, housing. And that's why we're doing the TAE in Pasadena because PCC identified many youth that are unhoused that are accessing services. And as we heard today, they're going to be expanding free education to four-year, which tells me that we're going to need to really amp it up in terms of a housing component for our community colleges especially.
And I think one untapped resource that we found is we have a lot of people within the Department of Mental Health who have been, who are former foster youth and who maybe have not disclosed. And what we want to do is roll out a campaign to encourage them to volunteer, to have a mentorship role or to have a peer kind of guidance role. And I think that could be very valuable for people to see, somebody who works in the county workforce who has come from a foster care background.
So is that going to be part of the Peer Specialist Demonstration Project?
No, this is just something we're doing on our own.
Okay. Because I am excited to learn about the Peer Specialist Demonstration Project. I mean, we've seen it with veterans. There's no question in my mind that peer-to-peer works. Who better to relate and understand and not even empathize, but there's empathy involved with some of the barriers that they face being in our foster system?
Definitely.
So how are you outreachings to the foster youth to participate in this program?
So the outreach efforts are actually being done by our partners. But I will say that for Department of Mental Health, we are expanding our outreach to our TAE. We participated, we did a presentation for the Youth Commission. We're connecting with, because the best way to get information out to the youth is from the youth. So we're going into the communities and making sure that they're aware of the opportunities and that they spread the word themselves so that they have these opportunities.
Great. I'm glad that you're using the Youth Commission to spread the word because that really does represent a county-wide coalition. And so I'm happy to hear that. On the, and then I've got a couple more questions, then I'm going to let others talk. But I'm interested to learn about the Youth Facilitator Child Family Team Pilot Program. Given the large number of foster youth, especially up in the North County that we have, I'm concerned that using just simply the RDI equity map will exclude foster youth living in areas known to have some barriers as it relates to services, transitional living programs, and independent living programs. And that in particular for me in the Antelope Valley and in the Altadena-Pasadena area, can you address this? Is that going to be, is that going to be looked at beyond just the RDI equity map?
Yes. So the RDI equity map is a good tool, but I agree with you, there are problems with it. What we have been doing in conjunction with, in our collaboration with DCFS, excuse me, is looking at data. We share data between DCFS and DMH, but we're also looking at internal DMH data. We do know from our Child Welfare Division at DMH that a lot of the foster youth are located in Service Area 1. And so making sure that we keep that in mind when we're doing some of the outreach, making sure that services are always available for those youth. And all the areas where we know internally is saturated with foster youth.
Great. I mean, again, I agree the RDI map is a valuable tool. But in certain parts of my district, it doesn't always translate into what's actually going on up there.
Supervisor?
And I'm, yes.
Pardon the interjection. I believe the RDI map can filter for non-contiguous populations like foster youth.
Uh huh.
I would like to go back to Dr. Scors and ask him this question and report back to you. Sorry. So you could, yeah, you could filter these layers. You could actually find your foster youth.
I know it's not, yeah, and I appreciate that. And I know Dr. Scors is aware, especially up in that part of the county, some of the challenges. So I appreciate that.
Okay.
I look forward to it.
Find out.
Thank you. And then, Deborah, how easy is it for parenting foster youth to access the Bridge Child Care Program? And then how long does it take to connect them with childcare? Because I know we have a huge deficit when it comes to slots for childcare.
Thank you so much for that question, Supervisor. So the system that has been set up over the past few years between DCFS and the Childcare Alliance has been very successful. So as soon as a children's social worker refers a parenting foster youth through that portal, within 24 hours, a Bridge Navigator will get back to them. And the placement of a child is at an incredibly quick rate for our system. It takes two to five days, which is very timely. Also, Bridge Program vouchers will last for about six months, but they can be extended to up to 12 months.
So when I see that 58 parenting youth receiving childcare through the Bridge Program are in place, but, and I'm told that there are 278 parenting foster youth in our system, do you know what the disconnect, I mean, the disconnect is in terms of the parents that are not accessing or asking for childcare?
That's an excellent question. And during the process of drafting this report, we've had several conversations with DCFS about that. There are presentations at meetings, and we are sharing access. The belief is that some of the parenting foster youth actually have arrangements with their resource family or other parenting care, and we do want to provide them with that choice. That being said, as we're rolling out this intentional new strategy, we will be looking into and tracking exactly where they are going for care since it is only about 20% that are accessing support through the Bridge.
Thank you. I'm going to yield to my colleagues because I do have questions regarding the Youth at Work Program, but I'll let my colleagues ask some questions and then I'll follow up. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Supervisor Mitchell.
Thank you. I'd like to piggyback on the last point you raised, Supervisor Barker. Very familiar with the Childcare Bridge Program. I was in Sacramento when it came through. The struggle then was, from my perspective at the state perch, was, you know, we were working to expand childcare availability to everybody. And when we begin to pull out, you know, particular communities, it just pushes everybody else out. So that was a struggle. Glad, very glad to see it funded. But I was struck by the numbers too. Not only the 58 knowing the number of foster youth who are parenting, but the 1,000 number struck me too because, as I recall, the Bridge was also for perhaps family members who were going to step up and provide foster care services, but who are working, who aren't kind of our historic perspective of someone who fosters who stays home, but they're a working person, may step up and have a court decision where they get a child placed immediately, and it's like, I need childcare. So that 1,000 figure just feels intuitively very low to me. It also feels low when I equate it to the funding amount. So even for six months of funding, that $33 million figure feels like we should be able to provide a lot more childcare. So tell me about the 1,000 figure as well. Are we under serving? Where are we?
I think that's an excellent question, Supervisor. About 23 million of that 32 million goes directly to the voucher program for placement. So we do know that a large amount of it is used for childcare. The rest is directed towards staffing, training, having the navigators, and so forth. We do think that we can utilize Childcare Bridge a little bit better. And through the plan of expanding the age ranges served, we feel like we'll have a stronger utilization as well as leveraging training to ensure that all of the children's social workers have a very good understanding of what's available through the childcare system, what's available through Childcare Bridge, and ensuring that they're childcare champions when they're working with families. So through those different pieces and especially targeting our parenting foster youth with intentional strategies and making it sure that everyone knows what's available to them, we feel like we'll have an increase in numbers.
I would hope that we would also talk to the courts. And so CASA volunteers, members of the bench are also aware that when they are making orders and placing children, that they also know that the Childcare Bridge is available. I'll continue to work with you all because I'm still not tracking the dollar amount. 23 million in vouchers servicing like 1,000 just feels to me like we should be able to have the capacity to serve a great deal more. And if we've been underutilizing the program, if the program is underutilized, and I'm hoping there are some carryover funds that will continue to, we can add to the state funding. There, thank you, Lair, for fighting that battle to make sure that we didn't lose access to that program because that's, we hear all the time, particularly from foster youth who are parents, that they need, childcare is, you know, next to housing, your most, your highest expense. So that program is critical, and we need to make sure we are utilizing it to the fullest as long as we have it. Couple of questions for me. Slide four, I appreciate all the reference to training, but I want to ask some questions related to supports for youth with complex care needs. I am clear, and DCFS has confirmed, that South LA serves by far the highest number of foster youth with complex needs. I appreciate the trauma-informed training, but when we are dealing with youth with a complexity of needs, I really want to make sure that we are prepared for that. And so for DCFS, what positions currently exist at DCFS to provide clinical advice on best practices, funding strategies, and options to maximize reimbursement for medical services? I want to draw down all of the resources we can that these young people are eligible for, including mental health services. And so how prepared are we within DCFS to be able to identify those challenges and provide those additional resources?
So we've hired a medical director that assists us with case management and system design. He is helping us to understand and take advantage of the opportunities under managed care. He's not from the behavioral health world, and we rely on our mental health partners to help us understand what's available there. We have requested a high-level mental health item dedicated to foster youth to help us navigate the mental health world a little bit better and to serve as a bridge and maybe advocate in securing those services, and that's pending approval. Also, while we have experts on foster care funding, we're not necessarily knowledgeable on medical funding streams and really depend on our health partners to help us out.
And how does that happen in terms of the health partners providing that? How is that braided together? How does that bridge exist?
I think through common tables, systemic care, conversations where we are discussing needed services, needed resources, we come together and identify funding sources that are available from each department. And sometimes that may look like in-kind type of services. For example, I think our mental health partner shared about the training they provided that was at no cost, right? And that's, was specifically targeted at serving our youth with complex needs, and most of those youth tend to be at our shelters. So that is one example.
Continuing on this issue, I'm glad to hear that you've got a medical director and you're going to figure out those funding streams. But the foster youth at their level have a decision to make too, whether or not to enroll in fee-for-service or managed care Medi-Cal. I mean, that's a, and it's an important distinction because services like enhanced care management and support services are only available through managed care. And so how are our foster youth, and what's DCFS's policy to help educate foster youth on how to make that choice? I know we as grown-ups, everybody dreads October when you have to make your own decisions around your own health plan. And so, again, this is a key distinction, fee-for-service or managed care Medi-Cal. So who supports our foster youth in helping them navigate that decision for themselves?
So traditionally, the kids in care are fee-for-service as they are the responsibility of foster parents. And we make it, we try to make it as easy as possible to access the services. With the recent changes and the expansion of managed care, that presents an opportunity really for us to ride better supports. And our medical director is currently meeting with managed care plans to figure this out.
Great.
And we're negotiating MOUs with all four plans right now.
Okay.
Our policy currently indicates, especially during a 90-day transition plan before a youth exits our system, to really cover some key areas. And one of those areas includes health insurance.
Great.
So we may have our partners, DPSS, explain some of the benefits that are available through the Medi-Cal coverage. Our independent living program does that as well for the youth. But we are, our medical director is working specifically to develop guides that will outline some of the benefits that are forthcoming with managed care.
Excellent. That's going to be important because, as you said, with the resource parents, they only had one option available, but now as they transition out, there are options, and they're very, it's important that they make the choice that's best for them based on the needs they have. One last question, Madam Chair, if I may, and it's to DCFS and Department of Mental Health. I'm curious about what other options are available. Again, I'm focusing on our youth with complex needs besides the MET teams, the psychiatric response teams. You know, what other ways are we looking at between DCFS and DMH in? and DMH in providing services to young people experiencing complex needs? You know, we've looked at, there are any number of examples, you know, are there ways that the county could be doing, you know, in-home based settings and community settings for youth beyond the current use of behavioral aids? Should we consider something like a specialized behavioral aide who can coach and improve communication and act as an extension of the mental health team? I'm just hoping that we're looking at creative uses of resources and personnel in terms of coming up with ways to meet the unique needs of these young people with these complex conditions. And so I'm wondering what creative ideas you have, if we need to come up with creative ideas around funding to support these innovative solutions to meet really complex needs. I don't know how else to put it, but there's some complex needs.
So our youth with complex needs are typically multi-system involved. And so we really need better relationships with regional center. We need better integration of substance abuse services. We need persistent and committed teams from DMH that don't break connections with kids when they're away from care or if they move placements. And we are working with DMH to co-locate mental health clinicians at the shelters so that there is direct impact on the youth with complex needs.
When we, when, oh.
No, go ahead.
When we took a look at some of the complex care cases that were really some of the most challenging, we found that they were really more behaviors rather than like a psychiatric emergency. So like a PMRT would have limited use. And that's why we decided to roll out this program with underutilized funds, reallocating them to staffing being co-located onsite at the DCFS shelters. This way, they can intervene when there's a behavioral problem, they can help staff understand better how to de-escalate a situation and how to tell the difference between a behavioral issue and a psychiatric emergency. And I think also what's going to be very meaningful is the near-to-peer mentoring program because, you know, in the time that I had treated foster youth, I found that it wasn't really like my brilliant clinical skills that made a difference, it was having a stable relationship. There were so many times where I would see somebody and I'd only had, they'd been my patient for a year or two, and they said that was the longest relationship they've had. So I think that the peer mentoring program is going to be very, very impactful in terms of developing the kind of secure attachment that will help somebody feel more secure in their lives, feel more stable, have less crises.
The new position you talked about that you're going to have in shelters, will those kinds of supports be in other settings where transition-aged youth find themselves, not just in shelters?
We have them now connected with our, some of our TAE drop-in centers, but we're, with DCFS specifically, we're starting in the shelter, in the DCFS shelter.
But it could grow beyond to the drop-in centers and some of our community-based entities that are building TAE transitional housing.
Yes, yes. In fact, we talked to some of our MCOT teams to see if that's a possibility of expansion for them, if they'd like to, you know, participate in the, some of the complex care cases.
I hope so because I think the complex care cases are those who have not had longstanding relationships because we have bounced them from one setting to the next based on behavioral experiences. They have a higher likelihood of then being unhoused. And so if we're going to transition them from shelter into some form of permanent supportive housing, I think that ongoing support needs to follow them as well. So I hope once the shelter kind of pilot is established, we can look at how we add those additional behavioral health supports in these other settings as well.
Yes, definitely Supervisor.
So they can continue to be successful wherever, as they transition.
And we can help people acquire a language to communicate other than behaviorally acting out. And I think that's something sometimes people around them, even service providers, don't fully understand. They're trying to tell us something with the behavior.
Agreed, agreed. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I actually want to pick up right there because I think for me, what I had hoped this report would show us is more collaboration, sort of where you highlighted that there are still gaps in the multi-system coordination, especially for some of these young people with complex care needs. And it's on us to break down those silos, not the young people who are accessing these services. They're the ones who suffer if we don't figure out how to make those partnerships work better. And DCFS, DMH, DHS, DEO, LASSA, HI, and our housing providers, we all have to work together in order to serve our young people properly and make sure they're getting housed and cared for and that they're connected to the mental health programs that we're expecting as well as the career pathways they deserve. We've heard from foster youth who participated in our program earlier this year, some of the challenges that they personally have faced even when they had vouchers in hand, ready to access housing. And just last Saturday, this past Saturday, a couple of days ago, I met with our youth commission who hosted a listening session in my district, and their experiences align with that and what is in this report that our young people really need more from us. And so it's on us to answer that call and center them in the experience. And I think what I'm most frustrated by, I think each department's report glowingly shows what you are doing, perhaps in your own lane, but what is absent is how we are centering actually connecting with the young people to deliver those services in a meaningful way. You know, I understand that the DCFS behavioral health position that was referenced in response to an earlier question is not being funded and supplemental, and it's critical from what you're explaining to making sure that we actually have somebody in that position to do the work. And so I appreciate that we have good answers for some of the questions, but we also have to implement that change in order to actually meet the moment for our young people. And I'm glad that we were able to avoid some of the proposed cuts at the state level. But again, they don't, it doesn't mean anything if we don't actually spend that funding and make sure that we're fully spending it, and I would rather us be going back to the state asking for more. Because I know when I spoke with some of the legislators in my district, they were of the impression that there was a historic, you know, or an ongoing underspend in these programs. And, you know, when we're going up there saying this is critical, we can't hear back that we're not spending money fast enough in order to serve our young people. So, you know, basic data, I think, should be the starting point for a report like this. And I wasn't able to tell how many beds are exclusively available for our DCFS youth who are exiting care. I don't know how many young people the Supportive Housing Division served. And so, you know, some of those data points are really how, you know, what the metrics of success that we're looking for, we have to be outcome-oriented in how we're telling the story of our work, not just what is the process, but how are we actually delivering meaningful results? So can you tell me how many young people are exiting the system in need of housing supports?
I can tell you this month, there are 62 youth that are going to exit, and right now, all but one, as of three weeks ago, had an identified housing plan that one was just waiting for an intake at a housing unit. And we also were encouraging that young person to do a referral at Stepping Stones, which is facilitated by Safe Place for You.
That's great news. Thank you for that. I also don't have a sense of how you are working with DHS, LASSA, and HI to think about how to leverage existing programs and funding sources because obviously this is critical to homelessness prevention. These young people in our care are actually a population we have some control over, making sure they aren't pouring out onto the streets. And so how is DCFS enhancing housing options and navigation for some of those most at-risk youth TAE, such as those who are at risk of homelessness or who are parenting or maybe carrying a child?
Great question. Thank you. Well, we have our Stepping Stones program, which is the Bridge Housing Program, started as a pilot and now an official program, so we're really excited about that. And so what happens there is that when social workers are in their transition meetings and they say that they don't have an identified housing plan, the social worker will then work with the Supportive Housing Division to make sure that we have that referral and are encouraging the young person to get that referral because it really is up to the young person where they want to go. But let's say they say, hey, I'm going to my grandmother's house, and we say, well, you know, just as a backup, let's make sure you have this referral because as we all know, when they exit, we then have no more jurisdiction. So we really, really strongly encourage and push and follow up on the Supportive Housing Division side to make sure that they have the referral with Stepping Stones.
And every social worker is trained in, with knowledge of that program, how it works, and advising every young person that they are, they are working with?
Well, same as what Ms. Coleman says, and the Supportive Housing Division staff does go to regular meetings with the regional offices to make sure the regional offices are up to date with all of the programs coming out of the Supportive Housing Division, including the Stepping Stones program.
Okay. I also understand that DCFS is in the process of a department-wide reorganization to address some of where those connections come into play. So what is the status of that and how will it help address what we're talking about today in terms of those connections across departments?
I'm going to let Ginny answer that one.
So we're working on a centralizing TAE case caring staff to provide better oversight and more consistent consistency for the youth. And this recommendation came directly from youth with lived experience. They felt very strongly about that. And it's going to incorporate deeper partnerships with DPSS and other departments in how we serve youth as they continue into their independence. And we're looking at regional drop-in centers as well to go along with that centralized focus.
And how will they know about them?
So the centralized focus will have all of the programs located in one division. Right now, the cases are carried by each regional office by what we call AB-12 social workers, and all those social workers will be under one purview, let's say, and all of the programs will be connected to that centralized program so that it's kind of, you know, a natural progression of all of the different resources that are available that you have now concentrated on a smaller, more centralized group of social workers that will be serving our TAE.
I'm glad to hear that a solution is being created so long as our young people are getting connected to it because that's always the critical piece. I think one, one of the things that did come up in our conversation this weekend was specifically access around mental health supports. And the feedback that we heard was that the experience is that DMH is not prioritizing the needs of our young people in foster care. So is DMH prioritizing them, and if so, how?
DMH is definitely prioritizing the needs of our foster youth. That's what, we have many specialized programs dedicated just to foster youth. Of course, you know, foster youth, especially in emancipating foster youth, can always access any part of our system on their own, but we have programs specifically focused on those specific kinds of needs and issues that foster youth have. And we have like a whole kind of laundry list of programs that we do in conjunction with DCFS. I think, you know, Supervisors, you have brought up though, a really important point, and that is how people, how the real people who need these services find out about the services. And I think, you know, what we have to do better, I'm happy we're expanding into community colleges, but not all foster youth go through community colleges. Where is it that foster youth get stuck? Where do they ask, where do they need answers to their questions? You know, is it at like maybe fast food job places? Is it, you know, where is it that foster youth are where they don't have the answers to where they can get help? So one of the things we're doing is expanding some of our outreach strategies to include a lot of different areas of social media because we wanted to see, have a better understanding of like where young people get their information. So we've asked a lot of our youth, okay, where, where do you usually go? Because it's not the radio anymore, it's not a newspaper, it's not any of those things. And it's basically just social media. So we're pouring a lot into that campaign so that when we have these wonderful programs set up, it doesn't mean anything if people don't know it's there and if they can't get to it easily. And I don't, Mary, if you want to add something about that?
No, I agree 100%. We do have a lot of services that are available for our foster youth and former foster youth. I think the other thing that we've been working on is many times when youth leave the foster care system and they go out into the real world, after a while, they need to be reconnected. And sometimes that's where they get lost. And so what we've been trying to do internally is making sure that our Prevention and Child Wellbeing and Child Welfare Division is working closely with our adult programs so that when they do enter into the adult system, that those supports and services are available to them.
And additionally, we're bringing back our TAE division so that we kind of have that bridge and we have a focus specifically on that time in a person's life where they are making transitions. And I think, you know, with the DCFS emancipating population, that's going to be a very important part of the TAE division's focus.
I did notice the DMH Peer Specialist Project seems to be sort of a multi-agency collaborative effort, so that's one example of something that is sort of moving in the right direction. But it didn't look like DCFS was a part of that, are they? And if so, why not?
I think DCFS is a part, is a part of that program.
Yes, DCFS is a part of the program. We've all been meeting together in coordination, yes.
Okay. I'm also told that the Stepping Stones program that you referenced earlier has a total of 24 beds and, but we know that the need is more than that. So, you know, that kind of a program is only as successful as we're able to expand. So I appreciate that you're acknowledging that something like that exists and it's clear we have to invest in building it out more. And I think for me, the takeaway of this conversation is by your own acknowledgement, sort of where the intersection of all these departments do or don't work together. It sounds like you have meetings where you're coming together to talk about what each of you are doing, but I'm not really clear on what the action items are in the intersections. And so since we have you all here today, is there something that's preventing you all from working together in the ways that you're identifying need to be improved that you need from us in order to do that? Or is there something that you're able to commit to today to overcome those gaps in coordination? What is it that we need to do in order to have that change?
Well, one of the first nags that we've hit with the, you know, co-location of a clinician and a peer at the DCFS shelters is that we found out we had, we couldn't get those sites Medi-Cal certified to do claiming because they were too small a space that they can't meet the different space requirements for Medi-Cal certification. So we've been trying to work with the state and our certification division to see what the workaround was. So it sounds like we have something in place. It looks like they'll just have to be attached to a clinic nearby and then have that be at a field, like considered a field place to do service. But the limitation on that from the state is that it can't be more than 20 hours a week of service. Otherwise, it has to be a fully certified site. So we're setting up a staffing pattern where we could switch staff out so that, you know, they can each do up to 20 hours and then we can be able to still provide and claim for those services.
Okay, so that's a state issue that perhaps our Lair team, our advocacy team can work with our state partners to help them understand on the ground the impact of that and what we might need to do to change. What, within the county family, because I heard, you know, acknowledgement that county, family, departments have gaps among them. So how, what can we do to change and solve for that?
So I think DCFS is able to provide housing for kids in care, and where we have limitations is once they leave care because the resources largely stop at that point. And so we're reliant on the vouchers and some of our partners to really resource that need for the young adult. And so I want to invite Lacta Emilio Salas to come up and share some ideas that he has on how we can move forward with collaborating and expanding the resources.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Emilio Salas, LACDA, I really appreciate the shining the light on this particular population. For us as a housing organization, we try to be as intentional as possible with all of the sub-populations that are having a difficult time accessing housing. We've enjoyed a great relationship with DCFS and mental health in doing so. One of the things that you've brought forward is the difficulty of utilizing that voucher. And we have a lot of programs in place to provide incentives, but we really need to go beyond that. We need to be the housing providers directly so that we don't have to struggle with that. We are looking at bringing a motion forward to provide authority to purchase, for example, multifamily development. multifamily developments where we are the actual property owners without a subsidy and that we can figure out a way to set those units aside specifically for transition-age youth or other subpopulations. Also looking at ways of using our existing portfolio in public housing. We had a demonstration project a few years ago that was highly successful in setting aside units within the public housing portfolio and setting them aside specifically for transition-age youth that were that were aging out of the system. So those are just a couple of ideas. We work very closely together already on the foster youth to independence vouchers, family unification program, even bringing families home, all of which serve this population. But I think we need to do a lot more ourselves locally so that we're not so highly dependent on the federal and state subsidies.
And do each of your departments have somebody designated as sort of an interdisciplinary working group working on this issue? Yes. All departments? Yes. Okay. Because I think that's that's also key is knowing who's going to constantly be tasked with this responsibility and be in coordination so other departments know who to work with. Because there's clearly acknowledgement of where where there needs to be a strengthening. Supervisor Berger, you wanted to continue?
Yeah, thank you. And I will say, I mean, and I don't disagree about the disconnect. I mean, Jenny, you identified some impediments. But what I'm going to say is, and I appreciate you thanking us, Emilio, but my frustration is like when human resources thanked us for bringing in an emergency order because they said we've had problems hiring. It's like, well, if you've had problems hiring, why are you waiting for us to do an emergency declaration in order to make it happen? If you all identify barriers or impediments, whether it be state or federal, or if there are things that this board does that are unintended consequences, which we have done, Emilio, and I know you could identify them, you need you need to call us on it. Don't wait for it to get to a point where we bring in motions saying the sky is falling. We just met with transitional age youth who are saying that they, there's barriers to housing and the vouchers that they have are not are not happening the way they're supposed to be happening. Because I hear you loud and clear, but I guess what I'm trying to say in a firm way, but respectful is, you have the power. We select you all as department heads because we have confidence in you to get it done. And if you feel that there are barriers that are being put into play by board offices or by departments, call them on it. That's really my way of saying you've got the power, okay? Having said that, when I hear that we're doing things, community college and all that, I would argue that that's important beyond as it relates to getting the word out. But there's one common denominator that all these foster youth have: social workers. So my question is, why wouldn't we start with social workers? And I know in talking to David Green about their caseload and all, that they are overwhelmed. But it's kind of like when we had public defenders who didn't realize that they could access services for their clients, mental health, substance abuse and all, because they were never really connected to those departments. I would argue with social workers, we should start to really roll out all the resources because that's where the seed is planted. It can be, it can be also put into play in our community colleges and all, but that's ground zero and that is the common denominator that all of them have in common. So I guess my question is, what kind of information is being provided to social workers? Because I know when I went out to the Pasadena office, many of them didn't feel that they knew everything that was available for foster youth and were a little frustrated. I don't know who's going to answer that question. It was DCFS, but I think it is. Although I've been, because our director was with me in Pasadena, and so we did hopefully address it, but I'd like to know what we are going to do about that.
So I agree with you. There are many resources that are available. I think sometimes the challenge is about service navigation. And we are looking internally about how we better organize those resources so that they're at the fingertips of the social workers. I think, you know, there's a lot of information out there, and so it shouldn't be their job to have to navigate that. So that is something we are working on internally. The other thing is when we have those 90-day transition plans, and I think even during the pandemic when we had the housing cliff, what worked really well was when we had our partners actually at the CFTs and at the tables in their respective areas and really offering to the to the youth directly what services are available. When we expect social workers to kind of be experts in multiple areas and they do the best they can, they can describe resources and available services, but sometimes some of it gets lost in translation. So I think that child and family team meeting is extremely important in how we kind of share what's available for our young people.
Go ahead.
There, I think two things that we're trying to push out that I think will be helpful. One is AI-generated resources to help our staff be able to more thoroughly and more quickly access, you know, what's available for somebody. So that's something that our department's looking into. But I think additionally, really investing in that peer network, because you're you're right, Supervisor Berger, everybody has a social worker, but not everybody trusts their social worker. And sometimes, you know, a peer has more street cred, right? And they want to hear how somebody else navigated the system. So if we can better inform those peers, then we could maybe more reliably get more information out to the youth.
And I appreciate that. And one department that's kind of been silent, but I know should be involved, and that's probation, because you have a lot of kids that are crossovers. And so I would ask that in discussions, and I know we've had discussions with the chief about some of the hurdles he's facing coordinating with departments to collaborate as it relates to services within our halls and our camps. I think it's important to recognize that many of those youth have been in our foster care system. And the goal is to keep them out of the probation system. And I hear you on the social workers and trust, but I think that there's opportunities for us to break down those silos and recognize that we are one when it comes to providing services for youth, whether it be for childcare, whether it be for mental health, whether it be for health services, whether it be for housing down the line. That's really what I believe the message should be and can be. But you as department heads are empowered to make that happen. And my one outstanding that I that I'm just kind of curious about is on the side of what you're doing, Kelly, as it relates to the the jobs and the youth at work programs. And I just want to focus because that's also something that that our foster youth need to be aware of in terms of access to the youth at work program. How do they access it? How many youth are enrolled right now? And then I know a question of transportation came up. So across the board, how are we doing with that? And where are we in terms of the numbers?
Thank you, supervisors, and thank you Supervisor Berger for the questions. I totally agree with my colleagues here. There's a major focus from the Department of Economic Opportunity on supporting our transition-age youth and foster youth. And also, we can do better and will do better in making sure that we are outreach in in the most expansive ways, offering that continuum of care across agencies and really meeting folks where they are. So for the for the youth at work program right now, which for folks that don't know it, is all of our programming for youth ages 14 to 24 at the Department of Economic Opportunity through our public workforce system. That includes our American Job Centers of California, and it also includes our, which is all of our hiring and training services, and it also includes our paid workforce experiences. So in FY '24, which just closed, we supported 12,318 transition-age youth with about a $30 million investment.
I'm sorry, what was that number?
12,318. So this is 14 to 24-year-olds. And that includes supporting them with about 9,486 subsidized and unsubsidized jobs. When it comes to foster youth, that's 983 foster youth with 742 subsidized and unsubsidized jobs last year. So a little bit about how that...
Out of how many? I mean, that that number percentage-wise seems kind of low.
Yeah, yes, it's about 10%.
Okay.
A little bit less. Sorry, my public math. Yeah, we can, we can continue to do better. So that's where our numbers are now as of FY '24, second year of the department. I can tell you a little bit about some of the ways we served those young adults. So our American Job Centers of California offer federally and locally funded youth services. So that's everything from outreach, job readiness, no-cost job training, connection to jobs, as well as our paid work experiences. We also partner, I know just because we mentioned this, with probation and with public social services. They direct funding directly for the youth at work program too. So we're making sure that we're prioritizing CalWorks recipients as well as probation youth in the camps as well with these experiences. I did want to lift that up. And we've supported about 700 young adults in paid work experiences through our county departments. The vast majority of those are with parks and libraries in the past year. But there's lots of opportunities for us to continue collaborating with all 38 departments. We also provide a host of other supportive services for young adults, everyone who's participating in any of our workforce programs. Obviously, everything is no cost to them. If you're in a training program or paid or work experience, you are paid wages. There's also opportunities to access no-cost transportation, clothing, uniforms, and unique opportunities thanks to the American Rescue Plan for flexible cash assistance, especially if you're in training programs.
Are you the lead on all that? I mean, is your department the lead on all that?
Yes.
Okay. So how are you as a department getting the word out? Because I mean, if that number is 10%, and we know, at least when I talk to foster youth, that that job employment is critical to them becoming self-sufficient.
Yep.
How are you moving forward, knowing that that number's low, going to roll that out in a more robust way to try to catch the youth, especially in areas where we know there's a high need?
Yep, okay. So a couple of the ways that we're, sorry, a couple of the ways that we are outreach now, and then I'll talk about a couple of our forward-looking focus areas to increase that number and make sure that we're not just increasing that number, but better serving young adults and supporting them in their both education and economic outcomes, because that's our goal here at the Department of Economic Opportunity. That's, we want to make sure that folks not only have economic security, but are mobile in their careers. So right now, if you go to our website, you can see how to sign up for our youth at work programs, whether you're a youth yourself or whether you're an employer who wants to serve as a host site. So I just putting that out there for folks to go to opportunity.laccounty.gov and see that. We support outreach through traditional press and agree with Dr. Wong, expanded digital media and social media. We work directly with youth-serving agencies, educational institutions, community-based organizations. We're part of the Opportunity Youth Collaborative, which has set an ambitious goal to reduce opportunity youth by 32,000, so making sure we're connecting folks to work or education. And we're a major part of that strategic plan, as well as many of my colleagues here. We partner with various county agencies. In the past year, we knew we had to do more to get out in the communities. So we held our first two youth at work, youth at work expos. We held one in the first district in La Puente and one in the Antelope Valley in your district, supporting nearly 700 young adults in those events that had dozens of employers and partners. We want to do more of that. We've co-located all of our city and county job centers with LAUSD People's Services and Tendence Counselors, making sure we're making that connection between the public workforce system and our educational system. And we also have an automated referral system between DCFS and DEO. In the last year, we saw 878 referrals from foster youth to our job centers. We know that we can do better there, too. How can we support that handoff? And we've talked to your team and others about that. And we're continuing to target areas that have a high proportion of foster youth and community-serving organizations. So that's, that's where we are at. It's not expansive, it's not comprehensive, but we're going to continue to do more and more. Some of the ways that we're going to expand our support for transition-age youth and foster youth in the coming year are, one, we are actually in the process of redesigning our youth at work program broadly. We received a grant from the Hilton Foundation to do that. We are bringing on a consultant to help us facilitate that effort because we currently have resources to serve about 10,000 young adults per year through our paid work experiences, as well as services through our job centers. But we think we can do more and deliver deeper services to yield those outcomes that we're looking for. So we're excited about bringing folks here into that conversation and bringing our county colleagues. We'll be rolling out that new design of the program in the next fiscal year. And starting on the, on October 1st, in just two weeks, we are rolling out our new American Job Centers of California contracts with vendors. We did, went through a modernization process for our public workforce system. As part of that, we created Centers of Excellences in each of our job centers focused on priority populations and high-growth sectors. So we're going to have a Center of Excellence, which is actually in the Antelope Valley. It's JVS SoCal and Los Angeles are our lead providers there that are going to help us, one, better deliver services for young adults, including foster youth, and help build the capacity of our public workforce system to do that. So you'll see big goals coming out of our department focused on this. We also want to build on the connections with our county agencies.
Can I ask you, how long has this program been in place?
The, the youth at work program? For a very, very long time. It was an iteration of the summer youth.
I mean, what's triggering the I want to versus doing? I mean, I think it's great you're bringing a consultant in, but if it's been in existence that long, I'm just curious to know what or why it's the aspiration to versus doing it?
Yeah, well, well, two things. One is that the department, when we were created in July 1st of 2022, which is two years ago now, we were looking at all of our assets and our programs and services and trying to better understand what works and what doesn't work. We know that we want to prioritize youth services, and this is one where we think we're leaving opportunity on the table. So we've already started to implement where we can, operational fixes, contract fixes.
About reading out what's not working and then building upon what you know needs to change and how it will move forward.
Yep. And we deliver our programs through our other six workforce development boards and over 40 American Job Centers of California in the region. We want to expand, we want to refine those relationships, but also expand to other community-based organizations who directly work with youth. So we're already doing what we can in real time, but we want to, you know, make a big splash, and I also think that we can with serve more folks. We already have an advantage in LA County because we don't just offer summer youth employment, we do year-round, but we can still do better. And then very quickly, last two things. We can support better connections with our county agencies too and supporting jobs in the mental health and healthcare field. So we have two programs, building off of the countywide youth bridges, which I mentioned, which is those 700. We have the Preparing Los Angeles County for Employment Program, PLACE, which supports about, has supported about 700 individuals in getting county jobs, in preparing for county jobs since it launched right before the pandemic. We've worked with mental health on a cohort for intermediate typeist clerks and community health workers and are continuing to work with Dr. Wong on that. And we also have launched an expansion of our Careers for a Cause program for supportive individuals with lived experience into social services and homeless services. And we're going to be working with DMH and some of the other health agencies on Skid Row and beyond for those peer specialist and mental health jobs. But a lot of the programs that you mentioned here, DEO looks forward to promoting through our system and better connecting with, including the expansion of the peer specialist program, which is running through the youth source centers.
Thank you. I'm, I'm done with my questions. And I do appreciate, and I'm not trying to be harsh, I'm just trying to kind of convey to you all the sense of urgency, but also the sense of empowering you to bring it across the finish line. Don't wait for this board to bring in motions, which happens, but it's more about just the final product, getting it done. Thank you.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. And I thank both of you for bringing the motion to allow us to have this conversation. Like my colleagues here, I participated in the breakfast that we hosted with with the mayor where we heard from some of the foster youth who are engaged in the advocacy organization. But I also attended the listening session at Right Way Foundation that Dr. But I also attended the listening session at Right Way Foundation that Dr. Hunter convened. And that setting was a little different, because here, they were in the Hall of Administration, although they let us know, the real deal, about vouchers. There, I was on their turf, partnered with Right Way Foundation, you know, a sense of, you know, it was their turf. That's where they go to get the support. And so the interaction was a little different, as it should have been. And, you know, what I heard, what I'm often reminded of, as we always talk about, you know, people who have been touched by our systems are the best to tell us how to improve our systems. And a young woman talked about, why can't we have an app? Because one thing that everybody has is a phone. And she said, why can't we have an app where I can go in and help navigate for myself resources that I need access to? And I said, you are right. They had lots of feelings and lots of conversation about their experience and their interactions with their workers. And there were folks there from DCFS to hear it directly. I was glad for that, in addition to Dr. Hunter. But what that reminded me of was my own experience managing one of the largest, the largest stage-one contract with the county when I was at Crystal Stairs, and my contractual restrictions on outreach, and the definition of outreach versus advertising. So if I'm trying to inform parents who are eligible for childcare, but my contract limited me in terms of how they define my outreach. So I wanted to do paid advertising with ethnic radio. I wanted to do an advertisement in the movie theaters. I was trying to, at that time, 15, 20 years ago, think creatively about sources of news. And so I am hoping that we are working smarter and are using social media and buying ads, whatever you do on TikTok, make them, buy them, I don't know what it is, because I'm old, but that we are not, we are no longer restricted in terms of this concept of advertising. We have to advertise the programs we create for people to find them. And so ads on radio, using social media, finding influencers and paying them if we have to, to take up these issues, to promote the programs that are, we are using a lot of resources, federal, state, and county dollars, to create. I'm hoping that we are not being restricted by old-school thinking about what advertising means, and that we're using social media and every tool we have access to, and that we're asking these young people for their ideas. Her concept about a singular app sounded like the answer to me. And so I'm hoping those are ways in which we are considering ways in which we can provide information. And an app not to replace a worker, that relationship can't be replaced, but those young people spoke pretty honestly and directly about their inability to access, the nature of the relationship sometimes with their worker. And so if an app could augment that relationship, particularly for the transition-age youth, who we then lose, I think is something that DCFS, DMH, we all should consider.
We're bringing on a youth at work staff to help us with our social media, and I can help any of our fellow departments with that, too.
Excellent. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I just wanted to add two things. First, in addition to probation, I would also add, DYD should be at this table with you all. It sounds like you have dedicated staff who are meeting regularly, who are charged with sort of overcoming a lot of what surfaced here. But in the, I love the idea of an app, because I do think you're absolutely right for a place for our young people to be able to go, because while they all have a social worker, they don't have them 24 hours a day necessarily. So that would be a great assist, great suggestion. In the meantime, where is the, can you tell me the list of specialized services that DMH is offering to our young people?
Happy to, Supervisor. This may not be exhaustive, but I know some of them are the specialized foster care services that are clinical services, Wraparound IFCCS, which is intensive-
Field-capable.
Field-capable children's clinical services, MAT, Family Preservation, The Hotline Project, QI Assessment Team, the STRTPs, Intensive Services Foster Care Services, Therapeutic Services Foster Care, CTF, and other, you know, board initiatives and motions. And Mary could probably add to more.
And where can young people find those services if they're in need of mental health supports? Where can they go to find that list?
They can, oh, go ahead.
There's a couple of places that they can go. Number one, it's all listed on our website, it's a public-facing website, so there's a whole section for TAE, for Transition Age Youth, that lists all the different services available. They can also go into the clinics and get information about what services are available. We have a TAE, which is a Transition Age Youth Navigation Team, that also provides information, outreach, engagement in the community.
Including the drop-in centers.
And the drop-in centers are probably one of the best places for youth when they are in need, whatever the need may be. Maybe they're in need of a hot meal, maybe they're in need of, I don't have a place to go, and I don't want to be on the street. That's one of the best places for youth to be able to get connected with any service that is available within the county for transition-age youth, particularly former foster youth.
Okay, so, and are all of those programs full with waiting lists?
There's no waiting list. It's a drop-in center, so they can come in at any time. DMH provides the funding for after-hours, so they're available in the evenings, and they're also available on the weekends.
I'm talking about the list that Dr. Wong just mentioned. So all of those services, are they all full, or are there vacancies?
There are vacancies. I think some of them, some of the clinical programs, depending on what type of clinical service, there, you know, could be a delay in like when they can do an intake, but for the most part, there is no waitlist for them.
Okay, just making sure, too, that there isn't sort of a limited number of spaces, and we're already tapped out, but we're providing it, so, you know, I want to kind of get a sense of that, too.
We try not to push anything out there if it's like too full, you know, because the last thing we need is to lose like the trust of somebody to look for a service, and like they can't actually get it.
Yeah.
But I think we're also trying to utilize, we had a very, we have a very successful campaign for recruiting for staffing called DoWorthwhileWork.com. So we're kind of trying to take that idea and apply it to other areas, too, so that it's a single QR code, it's a single place people can go to get a lot of information, really like good graphics, things that appeal to people, really pushed on social media. We're doing it for Hollywood 2.0. So I think, you know, it'd be wonderful to apply this to our foster youth population, too, to have this kind of campaign specifically aimed at connecting them with the array of services that might be available to them.
Yeah, I think, you know, future report, and this is, you know, lesson learned for me to be more specific in asking for those data points, because I think if had we started there knowing where availability is, even just that report could be handed to someone to say, here's how many beds are available, here's how many youth, you know, we're currently serving who, you know, you might be able to reach out to them and get a story from them. I think that that would also be helpful for a future version of this report. But thank you very much for being here and for all that you shared, and thank you Supervisor Berger for bringing this forward. Seeing no one else in queue, executive officer, please call the members of the public who have signed up to speak on this item.
Will the following individuals please come forward, and staff will assist you? Devon Williams, Dr. Critical Truth Bay. As a final reminder for participants on the telephone, if you would like to address item nine, if you have not already done so, please press 1, then 0 now to be placed in the speaking queue. Moderator, may we have the first remote speaker, please?
Our first participant is Eric Previn. Your line is open. If you're muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Thank you. What a miracle. I did exactly as I did before. Thank you. You know, I'm glad, I'm glad that there's not a waitlist, and I'm glad that, you know, we asked some questions about how these services are being provided to the TAE. It's a very hard, hard story. And I heard very clearly that, you know, the dream is to own the property so you can stick the people in it and not have to deal with the goddamn vouchers, which makes a lot of sense, but good luck. Where are we going to get the money? Like the zero-cost bulk-up-on-supervisors plan? Come on. And also, I'm just wondering why we didn't ask about the foster family agencies, who nonprofit places are having a hard time getting insurance, because the main company that provided it is not doing it anymore. What are we going to do to keep the FFAs afloat? I mean, has this been discussed by the supervisors? Do they have any, before staff rushes off to get lunch? Are we, do we have a strategy in place? Uh-huh.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Salam Allem. Your line is open. If you're muted, please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
Hi. Hi, my name is Salam Allem. Regarding housing and homelessness and DMH, we are going through the problem as supervisor Holly Mitchell is aware of it. I don't know how much she's aware of it, but her office staff is aware of it, definitely, and some of you. Unless you work definitely with victims like us, and like my daughter, you will never solve it. I told you in the past, you will never address this issue, never. Don't think that you have that power to address this issue. There is a system disconnection. There is a serious conflict of interest that exists with the Department of Mental Health, that they have too much power. Now I'm finding out also the sheriff is on it. You guys need to initiate investigation right away ASAP. The Fed needs to come and investigate.
Thank you. Your time has expired. Next speaker, please.
Madam Chair, there are no additional remote speakers in queue to address the board.
Okay, are there speakers in person? Okay, one more.
Yes. All right, so I did appreciate all of the members that were here today, but as a constituent, as a service provider in District 2, I'm glad to see that there is a need to streamline, especially DCFS, DMH. But again, the drop-in centers, the resources for the youth are not there. As we say that it's there, it's a $48 billion budget, and if we're applying for RFPs, if we're submitting NOFA's, all this red tape and delay and denial and six months to a year to get a response and award, it affects how we service the community. And our young people, especially with high rates of suicide, they can't wait. So I do thank you guys for taking a step in the right direction, but there needs to be some real follow-through on what was presented today. So I do urge you, and I again thank you for taking a step in the right direction.
Thank you. Next speaker?
No other speakers. With that, this report is received and filed. Hearing no objections, that will be the order. We'll now move on to Set Matter 1, Report on County's Implementation of the People Experiencing Homelessness Missions. For members of the public on the telephone, please press 1 then 0 now to comment on this item. Shree Todorov, Executive Director of the Homeless Initiative, Chief Executive Office. Dr. Lisa Wong, Director of Mental Health. And Dr. Gary Tsai, Bureau Director, Substance Abuse Prevention and Control, Department of Public Health, will make a presentation. Welcome.
Thank you, and good morning. I'm Shree Todorov, the Director of the Homeless Initiative. I am very happy to be joined today by Dr. Gary Tsai and Dr. Lisa Wong. We will be talking today about the homeless emergency declaration, specifically with a focus on mission number three, which is Mental Health and Substance Use Disorder Services. And I am going to check and see who has our clicker.
You can just say next slide.
We will do that. We can go to the next slide, and we can start with Dr. Tsai.
Hello, everyone. I'm Dr. Gary Tsai. So I'm going to focus on the strategies that we've implemented to address people experiencing homelessness with substance use disorders, starting off with the impact of the homeless emergency declaration, which has been significant. As we know, the pace of new initiatives, new priorities, legislation, and work has consistently outpaced the timing of being able to bring in staff and support or contracts to help execute those services or procure necessary materials or services. And so because of this, the homeless flexibilities have been essential to allow SAPS to more quickly bring in essential staff. This is to support new initiatives around homelessness, around CalAim, around Senate Bill 43, payment reform, opioid settlement, et cetera. It's allowed us to be able to establish contracts more quickly via truncated timelines to expand needed services in a more expedited way. It's also allowed us to fast-track procurement of supplies such as overdose prevention kits to minimize overdose deaths. Each of these areas have been extraordinarily helpful for us to better address homelessness, for us to achieve the plateauing of overdose deaths that we've seen as of 2023. And the time that's been saved has been several months in terms of each of these processes. And so just want to highlight that this has been extraordinarily helpful. To get a little bit more detailed with respect to hiring, the examinations under the homeless emergency declaration have allowed SAPS to open 13 exams. Other areas of public health have opened four exams. SAPS has hired 37 candidates through this process. Other areas of the department have hired 23 additional candidates to support this work. OPAs, or Ordinance Positioned Authorities, to support expedited hiring have also numbered over 32 items. From a contracting perspective, we've executed five new harm reduction contracts as we expand, as we continue to expand harm reduction services. We've also executed three opioid settlement-related contracts, as well as making nine contract amendments with respect to harm reduction, as well as juvenile justice SUD treatment services. With respect to procurement, we've been able to procure a substance use disorder network learning platform that we're using to help us train our contracted providers. And so this is different than the county learning management systems, and so this allows us to better train our contracted workforce, given that SAPS contracts out the entirety of our services. It's also allowed us to procure 25,000 overdose prevention kits. And so I know oftentimes, we receive the question about, you know, how the board can support. I think these emergency declarations have been helpful, as I've indicated. We do think that consideration for making these flexibilities permanent is something that would be helpful to consider moving forward. And then shifting over to our strategies for addressing people experiencing homelessness, if we think about people with substance use disorders, we can broadly classify them in three different groups. One group, which is in the green, small circle, are those who are actually actively seeking out substance use services. Then in the blue, slightly larger circle, we have those who are interested in services, but not actively seeking them out. By far, the biggest group, as you can see, is those in the orange circle, and these are individuals who are not interested in services. And so SAPS has been very deliberate about wanting to focus on all three of these circles, with the orange circle being the group that oftentimes is overlooked. And so things like the Reaching 95% Initiative that the board has supported help us to ensure that we're lifting up this group, creating services that can actively engage all populations who need SUD services, inclusive of the blue and the orange groups here. It also highlights our investments in the continuum of substance use services, from prevention to harm reduction services, to treatment and recovery services, and then lastly, data surveillance. And the proportion of people with substance use disorders who are not interested in services highlights the criticality of our harm reduction services indicated here in yellow. As we know, these are low-threshold services proven to reduce morbidity and mortality, reduce overdoses, help ensure connections to needed physical health, mental health, as well as substance use treatment services. And so this is an incredibly important service for us to better engage those who are not currently interested in treatment services, but who may be interested in other types of beneficial services. We also think a lot about optimizing the matching of our resources to community need. And so here, we think along the lines of breaking up people experiencing homelessness into three different groups with respect to how we can best serve those groups. One group on the left are- One group on the left are PEH who will or can engage in brick-and-mortar sites because they're interested in services. And when this is possible, there are benefits to this in terms of optimizing care quality because oftentimes, you know, substance use services are sensitive. People prefer having a quiet space to discuss their, whatever they're going through in their prior experiences. It also helps to improve efficiencies, which ultimately enables us to deliver more services to more people more quickly. The middle group, which are PEH who are not willing or able to engage at brick-and-mortar sites but would be willing to accept field-based treatment services, this is a group that's incredibly important to engage because there's an openness there. And this is the reason why we invest and have grown field-based services. This is the provision of substance use treatment for those who otherwise would not engage in brick-and-mortar sites but would engage out in the field. And then the last group on the right are people experiencing homelessness who are not able or willing to engage in any service but would benefit from outreach to build bridges, relationships, trust, et cetera, all the things that we would need in order for us to move them to the categories on the left. And so these are the benefits of providing outreach services with respect to engaging those who otherwise are challenging to engage and then performing outreach really to build those relationships and therapeutic alliances. And so briefly, we've significantly expanded along all three of these fronts with respect to brick-and-mortar sites. The service components that are offered in brick-and-mortar sites are the most comprehensive with respect to individual and group counseling, medications for addiction treatment, care coordination, family therapy, as well as other higher levels of care like withdrawal management, residential care, inpatient, hospital-based care, et cetera. And you can see, and we've talked about before, how we've expanded our DrugMedical Substance Use Treatment Services by over 275% since 2017, when we launched the DrugMedical waiver. Residential beds have increased by 200%, outpatient services by 50%, and recovery bridge housing by 700%. So significant expansions with respect to brick-and-mortar sites. We've also expanded field-based sites. And so these are DrugMedical reimbursable field-based treatment services that are provided in non-traditional settings. These could be shelters, interim or permanent housing sites, encampments, et cetera. The service components are a bit more limited just because of the setting essentially where these services are provided, but individual counseling, care coordination, and MAT are provided via field-based services. There are also considerations such as how do we scale field-based services given staffing shortages and cost of volume considerations with respect to the efficiency of these services, but they serve an important role in us engaging that middle group of people experiencing homelessness that was mentioned in the prior slide. The table at the bottom here just highlights how we've grown year-over-year, over the past two fiscal years, growing over 150% during that time with respect to the number of field-based service sites. And then lastly, we've also expanded outreach and harm reduction services. These services include outreach engagement, substance use education, linkage to needed physical health, mental health, substance use services, social services, as well as navigation and harm reduction supplies. These are provided in various settings, inclusive of interim housing, encampments, courts, urgent care centers, et cetera. They're commonly known as our Client Engagement Navigation Services, or SENS. We did start building Medical as of last year as a mechanism to allow us to continue to expand without any additional funding. And you can see here, over the past two fiscal years, we've expanded the number of SENS sites by almost 160% and are on the path to continuing to grow those numbers of sites while leveraging Medical to the fullest extent possible so that we can grow in a fiscally sustainable way. And then with respect to harm reduction services, which also engage in outreach services, these are provided in both brick-and-mortar as well as street-based settings. We've expanded harm reduction services by over 500% over the past three years. And also just wanted to highlight with respect to the continuum of services, we've also expanded substance use prevention services by over 260% during that same timeframe. And so these are expansions in prevention, harm reduction, as well as treatment. Looking ahead, with respect to brick-and-mortar sites, we do envision ongoing growth. We project approximately 50% expansion of brick-and-mortar sites over the next two fiscal years. There are various opportunities to help support this, such as the Behavioral Health Continuum Infrastructure Program and other funding that's coming down to help support this growth. Field-based sites, we project a 30% to 40% increase over the next two fiscal years. Similarly, we project a 40% to 50% expansion of outreach and engagement services through SENS or harm reduction services over the next two fiscal years. And so again, year-over-year anticipated growth. And then lastly, just to highlight that in terms of overlap with other county services, this is just with respect to services funded through the specialty substance use system. And so all of the additional work happening through CEOHI, as well as DMH and other partners is on top of this. And so with that, I will hand it off to Dr. Wong.
Thank you, Dr. Let me just start off by prefacing that this is not an exhaustive list, of course, of the different kinds of homeless interventions we have going on, but it really is focused on leveraging the emergency declaration and the impact that that has had. Okay, next slide, please. Oh, that would be me. So first, our use of the delegated authorities for homeless services and housing programs. We were able to do a lot of sole-source contracts, and some examples of these are the Behavioral Health Bridge Housing, which we contracted two consultants to support early implementation. We've contracted with Brilliant Corners to administer the BHBH program and DMH's current interim housing portfolio. Then for Hollywood 2.0, this has been very helpful in helping us move contracts forward. We had the Fountain House Clubhouse Program contract, A New Dawn, the Highly Enriched Residential Care Services, and RAND as an evaluator. And then for interim housing outreach program, our IHOP, we have the Regents of California, Regents of California and Los Angeles, California Policy Lab evaluator. Then for hiring, we have emergency appointments. Just between January 1st, 2023, and August 15th of this year, we had approved Ordinance Position Authority, or OPA's, 290. We had 503 DMH hired and promoted, and that includes county-wide engagement. We had 165 staff. Housing and job development, we had 23 staff. And then we approved 23 advanced step placements, which was really instrumental in helping us get very qualified people who ordinarily would not be interested in the public mental health system. Okay, I think one of our biggest areas of expansion related to people experiencing homelessness as well as the delegate, I mean, the emergency declaration is in the area of our homeless outreach and mobile engagement, also known as home team. And we have expanded the home team by almost double. We have added 107 FTE positions. So we went from nine street teams to having now 16 street teams plus operations and navigations team and a wellness and recovery team. If you take a look at the chart, in the year 2023 to 2024 to date, this is also the number of people we have served, housed, had to unfortunately do 50 on 50s on, and how many conservatorships resulted. So in 2023, we served almost 2,000. We housed 428. We did almost 250 on 50s, and we did 80 conservatorships. And 2024 so far is, again, getting close to 2,000 served, 346 housed, 138 50 on 50s, and 73 conservatorships. And we, the operations and navigation team is responsible for managing the planned admissions and bed management. This is how we've been able to reserve beds in our system and pay an extra patch to be able to have them reserved. Oftentimes, in our system, even if we have bed availability, facilities may not be open to taking our clients who are chronically homeless or have very high acuity mental health needs. The wellness and recovery team is responsible for preventing individuals from falling through the cracks and supporting transitions to lower levels of care. Next, we have creating the Hollywood 2.0 ecosystem. Hollywood 2.0 represents a new service model for us, the Hollywood Mental Health Cooperative. This is a collaboration between all the partners within this system and the directly operated Hollywood Mental Health Clinic. We had new housing resources, 102 interim housing bids at the Mark Twain and Hollywood Walk of Fame. And what's interesting about those interim housing spots is I did a site visit and spoke to some of the residents, and we have an unusual problem where people are so happy with the services and the sense of community there, they are hesitating to transition to permanent supportive housing when we find available units. So what we're doing is looking at how we can create that same sense of support and community in our permanent supportive housing sites as well. Then we have 100 adult residential care facility subsidies and 50 permanent supportive housing vouchers. Then the new programs we've been able to bring online are the Clubhouse, as we mentioned, and the Highly Enriched Residential Care Services at A New Dawn. And coming soon will be Supported Employment. The RFP proposals have already all been in. And then also a psychiatric urgent care with pure respite, which we're, we think will be very impactful to the community. Then in terms of interim housing outreach program, or IHOP, this is a collaborative approach, and there are several LA County Departments working together in collaboration. It provides critical supports during the assessment stabilization process to ensure maximal function and safety for those with ADL deficits. We really heard from a lot of our providers, especially in interim housing settings, that it was sometimes very challenging for them to work with our population of folks with serious mental illness, and they really needed more supports and more training to be able to work successfully with them. So this program is about getting people connected to DHS's Housing Navigation Services, which allows people to get documents ready and assessed in CS or be referred to Enrich Residential Care if needed. And the services include linkage to primary care, including mobile clinics, C-Best, mental health, and SUD services, and then linkage and referral to Medical, authorization for personal care, and also homemaker services and housing navigation services and care coordination, a lot of those things that are very necessary for somebody to have housing success. Okay, then there is our universal entry portal, and this stems from the demand for homeless outreach workers from Metro, LSA, City of LA, other places to have a direct referral pathway into DMH. The outreach worker referral screening tool was developed, and street outreach workers complete the tool with information they know about the client. That information's provided in the questionnaire determines the most appropriate DMH program, whether it's a crisis program, the home team, outpatient services, whatever, for the client using a built-in algorithm. So we did this to help give speedy access to workers in the field who are seeking access to DMH services. The referral information is then transferred to the appropriate program to follow up with the client who has the need. And here's just a couple pie charts about the status of referrals from May 9th to September 2nd, so, you know, just a few short months. So far, we have a majority of the referrals going to FSP services. FSP is our full-service partnership, our highest level of acuity outpatient program, 24/7, whatever it takes, very low caseloads. And then we have 11% going to our home teams, 4% going to outpatient services, very small percentage, and then, I'm sorry, 33% going to outpatient, and 4% outpatient self-referral. And then you can see in the second pie chart what the service area referral frequency looks like. We have the highest number of referrals from service areas four and five, but very close is service area two. Actually, all of them are fairly high. I think there's just a very high level of need. What was interesting, though, was service area six, which is traditionally an area where we have a high level of service need. We didn't have a lot coming through this portal, but what we, when we looked into it, what we found out was because the other referral sources, the referral network in service area six is so built out, they didn't have as much of a necessity to go through the portal. Same thing for service area one, very tight-knit community, very high service need, but there is also a very tight service referral network already built in. So, you know, what do all these data points mean, right? And what is the real-life impact of the emergency declaration in terms of being able to make our processes more efficient and effective? I'd like to share quickly a client story with you. This is Antoine. He is a victim of gun violence as an adolescent. He is left paraplegic, requiring catheter and colostomy bag. Developed psychotic illness in his 20s. He's paranoid, suspicious, delusional. He had a belief that he's Kobe Bryant, so really didn't need any help because he's Kobe. He left his family. He left his care facilities. He became homeless, chronically homeless, refused all offers of services and resources, like whoever tried to outreach with him. Eventually, he stopped being able to care for himself effectively and developed many kinds of physical impairments. This is a snapshot of the kinds of costs that were associated with Antoine, and he's not alone. He's not, he's one of many people that we served in that similar situation. You can see just services provided in one year in 2020, $200,000 worth of fire department calls, two, over $200,000 worth of St. Joseph's Emergency Department, $470,000 at Cedars-Tarzana, Holy Cross Emergency Departments, $614,576 at other emergency departments, $121,294 in limb amputation, amounting to $1,608,903 of costs just for this one single individual in one year. And that is not even to speak of the suffering that he endured, the conditions that he was living under, and the hopelessness that he felt at that point. And with home involvement, once the home team stepped in, the services provided in 2023 were psychiatric skilled nursing facility, which amounted to $90,885. Now, this doesn't, of course, take into account the cost for the home team itself, working with him, but those costs are fairly minimal compared to, you know, a lot of these institutional costs. So we went from $1,608,903 to $90,885. To, in 2023, enriched residential care facility at 157.68 a day, the cost came down to $57,553.68. And he has now actually transitioned to even lower level of care, full-time. In fact, I had just visited the facility he was in about last month and got to speak with him, and he was just about to go into the next lower level of care. And I wouldn't have even recognized him from that photo that was in the previous slide. So this is Antoine, once he started getting care. And you can see a very big difference from the person that law enforcement and everybody in the neighborhood was familiar with. It was life-transforming for him. He got reconnected to his family, as well as receiving care and moving into a more, much more appropriate housing environment for him. So, you know, we have real-life consequences as well as dollar consequences when we have things in place that can expedite our processes and allow us to do more with what we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wong and Dr. Tsai. I just want to take a minute to talk about coordination among the Departments and the Homeless Initiative. Our teams are working together on a near-daily basis. I think it's probably safe to say it is daily. We are coordinating very closely on encampment resolution efforts, on serving unsheltered people, as well as providing additional supports within interim housing. A number of those were talked about today. We really have been focusing on bolstering resources and supports for people who are unsheltered and for increasing the teams that are serving them, as well as their ability to access these needed mental health and substance use services. A lot of that work is happening through events and activities such as Pathway Home and Insight Safe. The county Departments are involved in all of those efforts, as well as Service Connection Days that we have as soon as people move in. Days that we have as soon as people move inside and start their pathway to permanent housing, where multiple County Departments, which always include DMH and DPH, are onsite, onsite to provide those resources. On the, also additionally on the interim housing side, which we heard about as well, was the incorporation and expansion of teams that are going onsite that include DHS, DMH, and SAPC teams to do onsite support, supporting interim housing providers and the clients in those locations, getting connected to all of those county resources and benefits. And then of particular interest is really trying to streamline those referral pathways, document those referral pathways, and get the disposition of those referral pathways. So we heard Dr. Wong talk about that, working closely with LSA, with our County Departments, establishing a referral pathway for outreach workers, where we're then able to track and get disposition of those referrals, and they know exactly how to make those referrals and have dedicated pathways. So that has been a new tool that we are very excited about, that we are continuing to monitor its implementation, and really appreciate the outcomes that we're already seeing with our County Departments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Supervisor Berger.
Thank you, and thank you for the slideshow. I know that, you know, that we've got a lot of challenges, and I love stories like the one you shared, Dr. Wong, that really do highlight what can be done when you focus and hone in on what, what works. And when you look at the costs associated with pre, and then we put, we put into place something that actually is going to, it's life-changing for him. You know, it's not lost me the state's benefiting because that's far, because I think with the emergency room and all, they get reimbursed through different forms of funding. So it's from a, from a financial, it's a win, but as you pointed out, for the client, it's a win. And so I want to thank you for that because it kind of helps give us an idea of what we're spending that is not being effective. Dr. Tsai, have you gone out with the harm reduction teams, like down to Skid Row, and talked to some of the providers down there?
Yes.
And?
Regarding their...
Yeah, the reason I'm asking is because I did, and I heard mixed reviews in terms of oversight on how harm reduction is being rolled out. And I was told that part of the harm reduction is education about services available. And so I'm just curious to know if you all are going out and just making sure that that is being done? Because there's definitely mixed reviews, not only among providers, but also among people living on Skid Row, that have mixed views about harm reduction.
Yeah, I mean, we do site visits to all of our agencies. We also have standing meetings with them to coordinate. You know, like a lot of workforces, there is some variability. So I think we are interested in hearing what, what you've heard. You know, I think the intention is for harm reduction services to build connections with people, trust, to talk about the services that are available that they could benefit from. You know, there have been times where we've heard certain elements of that have not happened, and we've tried to address that with those agencies when we've heard that.
Thank you. You know, when you look at the, the third mission of the county emergency declaration is about mental health and substance abuse support. So collaborating with DMH and, and substance abuse is, I mean, the, the public health is vital. It's actually essential to making it happen. Regarding that collaboration, what preventative measures or early intervention strategies are in place to address mental health as substance use issues before they lead to homelessness? Because prevention is always a key.
Yeah, I mean, I can talk about, we invest heavily in both prevention services, as well as, we think that many people with substance use disorders are at risk for homelessness, whether they know it or not, just because of how quickly that condition can evolve. But on the prevention front, we're investing more than half of our federal block grant in prevention services, which is more than double what the minimum requirement is, because we do fundamentally believe in investing upstream. And on top, we're also investing realignment dollars on top of that in prevention services. These fund things like positive youth development, so that we're investing in youth to hopefully prevent the substance use disorders that can then drive homelessness years down the line. With respect to other services, we've, just with the implementation of the drug Medi-Cal waiver in 2017, care coordination became reimbursable through Medi-Cal, which surprisingly, prior to 2017 was not the case. And so with care coordination, our agencies are able to connect people to benefits, connect people with housing. That is a data point that we're tracking closely. You know, about a third or so of the clients that we serve within the specialty substance use system do report being unstably housed or homeless. So it's sizable, but also not everyone. So two-thirds report having some form of housing. Vocational resources are something that we've emphasized with our clients, because we, we see that as a preventative measure for homelessness, as well as housing navigation and to not just housing, but also other needed services and benefits. And then lastly, recovery bridge housing and recovery housing, both of those are really to buy time, right? For people who have received substance use services, to be placed in that interim, recovery-oriented interim housing environment, to buy time as they find a permanent housing option. Sometimes that's family that they've reestablished connections with as they've, you know, gone down the road to recovery. Other times, it's, it's working with housing partners.
Do you have any idea of the percentage of people experiencing homelessness that do suffer from substance abuse, use disorder?
Yeah, when you look at the data, there's a bit of a range, anywhere from a third to two-thirds. I tend to think that the two-thirds is probably more accurate, because a lot of the data's collected via surveys, and we know that people with substance use disorders, if you ask them, you know, many will say, no, I don't have an issue. And so I think that the actual number is probably on the higher end of that range.
And then what about co-disorder or dual diagnosis?
It's a similar percentage, you know, probably on the higher end, again, about two, two-thirds, anywhere from 40 to 60% have co-occurring conditions of some sort. But the co-occurring could be at different severity levels or acuity levels with respect to their mental health or substance use condition.
Do you agree with that, Dr. Wong?
Yes, and, and you know, one of the limitations, of course, as Dr. Tsai suggested, was that this is all by self-report.
Yeah.
So I think in the last homeless count, 21% identified as having a serious mental health issue. Estimates vary, you know, California Policy Lab came up with 10%, but that was a very specific diagnostic category of schizophrenia and psychotic spectrum disorders. And, you know, other estimates have been anywhere from 25 to 40%.
Yeah. When you look at that number, how do you, for example, I know LAMP is down on Skid Row. How do you allocate resources based on the high-end two-thirds, low-end a third? And then, I mean, I would say that if I was on the street, I would probably self-medicate, you know? So if they weren't, when they got on the street, I'll guarantee you after a week or two, they're going to have some sort of trauma, but even possible use of some sort of illegal substance.
I think you're absolutely right, Supervisor. You know, to some extent, unfortunately, developing a substance use issue or even serious mental health symptoms is almost a healthy response to the situation that they find themselves in. If you are somebody who was formerly housed and employed and had a social network around you, and now you are not, that is devastating. And as that goes on, you know, a person deteriorates. And I remember, you know, my years at Skid Row, I could see people deteriorate in front of my eyes from week to week. And so we concentrate a very large portion of our resources on reaching those who are most, most at risk, highest acuity. But we also have a certain percentage that we save for our people in outpatient services and FSP, because for us, that is the best prevention for, you know, preventing people from, more people from going into homelessness who have serious mental illness. And I think Chair Horvath asked me earlier about, you know, are there any county impediments or ways I need county support? And I have to be honest, the, our Board of Supervisors, our CEO, our, my County Department colleagues have all been pretty much tremendously supportive. Our struggles are different, definitely with the state. You know, we are losing all our prevention dollars, and 30% of our service dollars are going to housing only without services. And I think that is what impacts, you know, future folks from falling into homelessness. If you look at the last homeless count numbers, only, well, I mean, it's not only, but only 40% were chronically homeless. That means you had 60% who are not chronically homeless, which means they have been homeless possibly for less than a year.
And those are the ones you wanted?
Exactly. If we can impact there, we can actually move the marker on solving homelessness.
That actually leads into my next line of questioning, and it's for you, Shree. You know, last September, this board settled the LA Alliance case, where we agreed to bring 3,000 new mental health and substance abuse beds online for people experiencing homelessness within the city of Los Angeles. And I recently got a walkthrough at Skid Row, as I talked with Judge Carter, and I can tell you, those beds are needed now more, more than ever. Can you speak to the Skid Row action plan and where the county is in bringing those additional beds online?
Thank you, Supervisor. The Skid Row action plan grew out of a motion from Supervisor Solis in June of 2020, 2022. It was originally funded with Measure H funding, got it started with a $20 million investment. The Department of Health Services has played a key leadership role with the Skid Row action plan with our departments here and other departments and other partners. And DHS was able to secure a state emergency, a state encampment resolution grant as well, which is being used in Skid Row. And so the Department of Health Services was recently able to release some outcomes associated with the Skid Row action plan. And between July 1 of 2023 and June 30 of 2024, almost 8,000 people experiencing unsheltered homelessness in Skid Row, access to service through the outreach teams, access centers, and health clinic.
What does that mean in real terms? What does that mean, access? I mean...
Got to cert, they came in and they engaged with a team or with a health clinic or healthcare provider, and they were provided with services. Of those...
Are they, I mean, I'm just telling you, Shree, I, I hear what you're saying, but in layman's terms, are they, are we housing them? Are we getting them off Skid Row?
So 1,800 people moved from unsheltered homelessness into interim housing in Skid Row during that period of time. Almost 1,000 people moved into permanent housing during that period of time. We have seen the change in the, in the homeless count between the time period that the Skid Row action plan has been in place. So between the '22 count and the 2024 count, there's been a 22% reduction in unsheltered homelessness in Skid Row.
So that, that then, a follow-up question to that is, I'm going to elevate an issue that's been brought to my attention by service providers in my district, but I've heard it's county-wide, and that is the bed reimbursement rates for interim housing beds. I have providers that are underwater and struggling to keep those beds online, especially in the Antelope Valley. One told me they're losing approximately $300,000 a month. And to bring those beds offline, when we talk about, everything we've talked about today leads to beds and interim housing. And I know there are people that don't like interim housing, but it's not up to those people who don't like it to make a determination that it's not needed, okay? Because it is needed. And so my question is, where are we on the rate reevaluation? Because again, if it's happening in the 5th District, I've heard there are others that are going to go offline. And if they go offline, the message that we're sending is that we're not prioritizing. And as part of your role is to triage and, and make tough decisions in terms of how we're going to spend the money. And I know you're concerned about the financial implications, but if I need a new roof, I'm going to have to give up something in order to pay for that new roof. So my question to you is, where are we on that, and when do you see that being rolled out?
Yeah, thank you very much for that question. It has been a priority for us to look at rates across all of the services that are being funded in the homeless response system. And we've done a, a particular deep dive as it relates to interim housing. So we have been working with the biggest funders of interim housing, so the Departments here, as well as DHS, LSA, and the city of Los Angeles. We did secure a consultant app associates who did a very detailed rate study. They met with over, and got information with, from over 125 locations that operate interim housing sites to understand their true costs to help develop a new rate structure. We are in the process of finalizing those options to meet the financial needs of our partners. So there are really two things that we are considering here and looking at. There is the realignment of existing funding allocations, so that we would then be looking at how we prioritize the most impactful investments, looking in particular at that bed rate, and then being strategic about how we leverage some of our one-time carryover dollars as it relates to the cost associated with that bed rate. We're also identifying, looking at identifying additional funding if realignment of existing investments is not sufficient to meet the needs of our provider partners. So this is an ongoing analysis and sliding scale in terms of how much we realign versus how much we're able to identify new revenue. So we are working, and we will work directly with your offices to finalize our analysis by the end of the month, so that we can move forward with the rate structure and with reprocurement of interim housing beds using that new rate structure.
When can we expect to vote on something? Or, because I know that when I started on LSA, this issue came up, but now I've got providers that are going to shut down beds.
Yeah, so we are...
And we're coming into the winter months.
Yeah.
And I don't think that's the right direction to go.
Yeah, so we are looking at, so the, the board did do, and we approved a rate increase that went into effect January as an interim rate increase, knowing that we were going to complete the rate analysis. So there has been one interim rate agreement, increase. We're looking at recommending another rate increase effective January 1, again, of this year, as a bridge to the new rate structure going in place July 1.
And I think that's why we did the last rate increase, as a bridge, recognizing that they're bleeding, and at least we can, at least put a Band-Aid on it.
Yeah.
But I think we need to look at a permanent fix and even a built-in index for cost increases, which we all know in the county. Joe can testify that, that each year, costs go up for our employees and for the services. So we need to build in something so that we're not revisiting this. But I just want to thank you for the presentation today. I mean, I'm frustrated, I would encourage you all to put on tennis shoes and sweats and walk Skid Row on a Sunday morning. It is, and actually, I'm not, I'm not even going to encourage you, I'm asking you to please do that, because that is ground zero for what is going on. And that's why I ask you about the harm reduction. What I'm being told on paper is not necessarily translating in what's happening on the streets, and it scares me. And when you do it, you will lose sleep, or you will roll up your sleeves and say, we need to do more. And I hope it's going to be the latter, recognizing that we have a lot of work to do. You know, there is a crisis on the streets, and it's not just, I mean, and Skid Row's not my district, but the impact that it's having on this community and on the individuals that are living down there, and now we've got women and children once again living on Skid Row, intense amongst people that they should not be living next door. A credit to Mayor Bass, because I talked to her about this, and she is acutely aware and is very much engaged. But as a county, providing the services, supportive services is a must. And when we talk about interim, if it means standing up emergency shelters as we move into the season that we're moving into, you know, I think we need, we need to lean hard into this. I am all in to support you in any way I can, because each and every one of us have responsibility. And whether it be for substance abuse, mental health, families experiencing homelessness, we as a county, working with our cities, can do better, and I'm confident we will. But Shree, I look forward to getting the rates and working with our nonprofits to make sure they don't take beds offline, because again, all roads lead back to beds. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Mitchell.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Thank you to the panel. I very much enjoy and find these presentations very helpful and useful, so I appreciate that.[1798.36][1798.36] Starting with one of the earlier slides, it's clear how impactful reducing the red tape in the procurement and hiring process really can be. And so I look forward to keeping those processes streamlined so that substance use disorder treatment programs really can continue to serve people experiencing homelessness in the most efficient manner, as well as our ability to hire quicker. I introduced a motion to help all the health departments, you know, bring people online faster. And so I'm, I'm curious if we're going to need, if there's a way around emergency declarations or specific motions to streamline our hiring process across the board, all departments. You know, we, we, we have vacancy rates in multiple departments. We are sitting on unfilled positions, and it's not because the need for their work and service doesn't exist. We know it does. That's why the positions are on the books. So what can we do? I guess it may be a question of, of county council or CEO. Do we have to do it in this manner through emergency declarations or motions to figure out ways to streamline hiring that we see works based on Slide 2? And I think probably every department across the board needs to help. How can we do that as a board?
Supervisor, great, it's a great question. I think, I know DHR is doing a lot of work in this space. We have some good outcomes from the emergency process. I think it's a great opportunity to put a stake in the ground and see what kind of plan we can bring back to the board with county council, with DHR, with labor. We need a lot of stakeholders to work with us. So now I think is the time to do that, round that corner, and take stock of what we've done, how well we've done with the emergency hiring, and see what needs to be put into place, again, with all of our partners and with labor, to make sure that across the board, even if we have to start with our most critical positions, let's start there, and then let's see how we can really change the way the county hires. And I suspect that it will be instructive for other agencies in the region as well. If we can get around our own difficulties and our own processes, then others will probably follow suit. So this, this is the time, and I, that's a great question. I think that, I had made a note earlier going through the slide, we're ready. We need to do that hard work.
I appreciate that answer, because I think that that should be a takeaway from COVID, because frankly, that's, that's what spurred the motion I brought forward to help all the health departments, this emergency declaration because of our unhoused numbers. So I indeed hope that we can do that, learn from, we've got a couple of really good examples, take from those experiences what worked, what could be improved. So thank you for that. I certainly hope that's what we will continue to focus on. I'm curious, I don't know that I saw on Slide 2, let me flip back, like, the number of people we were able to hire. Is that something we're tracking? I know we're looking at the process, and it was more efficient. Can you tell me? Okay, my copies aren't numbered, so I can't find it quickly, but I know it was Slide 2. I was looking at it up on the screen. How many were hired in utilizing the emergency declaration process?
And Supervisor, are you referring to one of the SANSI slides on hiring?
Yes, yes.
So we did have 37 candidates who were hired through the HI process through SANSI and 23 candidates for other areas of the Department of Public Health.
Right, yep, thank you. I think being able to, going back to the point about really showing that we are able to expedite and get people hired and actually tracking those numbers, I think is going to be really important. So thank you for that. Again, thank you all for the update. It is encouraging to hear that we can document how beneficial the emergency declaration has been. It's sort of a no-brainer to me. We knew it would be. So I'm glad to see that and heard you loud and clear about wanting to continue to have that benefit. And I'm sure the chair who brought the motion in the first place is probably considering working with you all to figure that out. So I look forward to seeing how that comes to fruition. Slide 11, you know, can you, I'd like to hear recommendations on how we can reduce the cost to volume of the service recipient ratio. What will we, what would you need to resolve the challenge as listed on Slide 11?
Yeah, so this has to do with the provision of field-based services. And when we contract with agencies for these services, they allocate staff time for them, regardless of how many people that individual, that staff person might engage. And so I think some ideas, one would be working with wherever we're situated, whether it's a housing site or otherwise, to help us, you know, ensure that the participants there are aware that these services are available. Also, working with the staff that are there, whether it's a housing manager, whether it's a social worker through child welfare or other settings, very similar to the reaching 95% initiative, so that those other areas are priming their service participants who may benefit from these services, so that when those services come on site, they can be maximally impactful. But this is a chronic and ongoing issue where, you know, we do have some providers who say they've allocated X number of staff to the site, they saw two people, and how financially, you know, that that can be challenging.
Right, right. Slide 21, it included reference to the portal and, and the referrals, but I don't see in the presentation is actual utilization rates of services as well as the location of services by spa. And so what are the numbers for each of the strategic approaches to meeting the needs of people experiencing houselessness?
I'm certain.
Are you collecting that data by actual utilization rates by spa?
We have all the utilization rates by spa, but I think I'm not quite sure what data point you're looking for.
Trying to, trying to figure out by spa, because we know each spa has a unique set of challenges, the people who live there, I mean, they're not all the same. And so really trying to figure out if we are coming up with strategic, unique to the spa, unique to that population, strategies to meet their needs. And so I guess my point is, are we capturing location of services by spa to then figure out if what we are providing to those folks is working and it's relevant to their unique needs?
Yes, we do capture all of that data, and I can forward that to your office.
I'd appreciate that. Last question for me, Madam Chair, is, is similar yet different. Recognizing that there are, what are we doing to make sure that unique cultural groups are accessing and receiving substance abuse and prevention services? When I think about language barriers for API and Latinx, family, friends, and neighbors, the unique needs of my Native American constituents, African American, and so how is public health and the other departments responding to the needs of particular ethnic and cultural groups to make sure they're having access to these needed services? Particularly when we consider the disproportionate rate with which some of those subgroups are experiencing houselessness and substance use disorder and mental illness.
Yeah, I appreciate that question, because a fair portion of the clients that we serve are Spanish-speaking, that's the largest non-English group. This upcoming year, which is this fiscal year, we've built in financial incentives to incentivize language assistance funding for our provider network, so that we could grow those services, obviously not just for Spanish, for all kind of non-English languages as a way to try to prioritize non-English speaking individuals. I've had conversations with Dr. Wong about, you know, how we can do a better job of engaging the Asian community, just because across both of our departments, the, the numbers are low, and we know the need in the community is likely higher.
Right.
I think there's a role for just on the ground, you know, getting out there, community engagement, whether they're NAMI groups or whether there's other community groups where, you know, Dr. Wong or myself or our, our leadership can, you know, talk about where we are with services and how it can benefit individuals. I mean, I know for myself, growing up with a mom with schizophrenia, I didn't know what resources there were. That's one of the reasons why I'm doing the job that I'm doing today. And so I do think that that can be helpful, right? I mean, we've built tools. We do have an app where people can use it to identify services. We have a web-based tool where there's a map to help identify those services as well. But really, learning from the community about what are some of the key ways that you want to access services, and what are some of the key things that are preventing you from doing so in each individual group?
And so language access is critically important and other cultural barriers. So I hope that there are ways in which we can work with a variety of community-based organizations that work with immigrant communities. I represent Little Ethiopia, have a lot of African immigrant communities in my district who are struggling with access. I, I don't know that I've ever understood, you know, at the state, we have the threshold language requirement for service provision, the Diemali Alatory Act, actually, that had threatened. So that's, I assumed, you know what happens when you assume, that that kind of transferred to every level of government. So as you talk about expanding to Spanish as well, do we have a requirement around the threshold languages in L.A. County that we are required to provide the services?
We do, and we have provided those, but it's about continuing to expand those services because we know that there's individuals who would benefit from those non-English services. And also, when it comes to behavioral health services, in particular substance use treatment, it's not the same as going into a hospital and engaging with a client, right, for 30 minutes, and that's it. This is something where, you know, multiple hours every day in a residential substance use setting, we need someone there. And so we need different tools to be able to do that if, if a physical person can't be there.
Got it. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
A lot has been covered. Thanks to my colleagues, and I, I know that this is a critical conversation for us. It comes up at every table I'm at. I'm sure Supervisor Berger can agree, whether it's LSA or La Casa or the new Exec Committee, every group that we're encountering, contract cities, any of my independent cities in the district, the intersection of mental health services, substance use, and, and our unhoused crisis is what everyone's talking about. And I know in many other counties, DMH and SANSI, those functions exist in the same department, but since you're separated here in L.A. County, how are you actively working together to address the behavioral health needs of people who are unhoused? Where, where is that intersection happening?
We have many collaborative efforts together, and one of the more recent ones is our co-op pilot project, looking at providers who have both SANSI and Department of Mental Health contracts, and how they integrate services and what we can learn from them. I think that we have a long way to go in terms of looking at that, because even with our, our contract providers who have contracts with both sides, they tend to have programs that are really more one or the other, but they're attempting to bring the two together. I think as a department, you know, we get a lot of like training and different resources from SANSI. We have established MAT prescribers, that's medication-assistant treatment. We've established MAT prescribers at every one of our directly operated clinics and every one of our field-based teams. We've done extensive training within the Department of Mental Health on different co-occurring modalities that are helpful. We have substance abuse, substance abuse counselors at every one of our directly operated clinics, and this is something that we put out to our legal entity network as well. I think that, you know, one of the things Dr. Sai and I have discussed is, it's not always just about the training or the knowledge. Sometimes it's about a culture shift and about, you know, bringing, for instance, folks in mental health, bringing them into, into focus on the fact that we're treating a whole person, and part of that is their substance use disorder, if that's present, and that it's not something you hand off to the substance abuse counselor, but you work together as a multidisciplinary team. And I think one of the ways we've been able to kind of help turn around the culture is as we recruit, we intentionally look for people who are able to view things through a different lens. So as we've looked for psychiatrists, even though, you know, it's, it's very difficult to recruit for psychiatrists, one of the things we push for is looking for psychiatrists with an addiction medicine specialty, or who are at least very open to being a MAT prescriber. We look for people who have substance use treatment experience in our clinicians, as well as people who really are invested in working in a multidisciplinary manner. And we found that by bringing in new people to kind of help turn the tide, that has brought even some of our older, you know, folks, I don't mean older age-wise, but who've been in the department longer onboard, they start to adapt to what they see as the growing trend in the department. They are able to be more responsive, because we're pushing out the directives, we're pushing out the trainings, we're pushing out the actual practices, and these providers who are willing and ready to do, you know, for instance, MAT.
And I would say, we have a steering committee structure that's focused just around how we can achieve better behavioral healthcare integration, particularly at the client level. In July, we integrated our call centers as the first component of behavioral health administrative integration under CalAim. There's 10 other components related to that that we're working towards. I don't know if this is good news, but in other counties where they're under a single behavioral health department, they still operate largely separately, because at the state level, there's actually two separate systems. Even after behavioral health administrative integration, there's going to be two separate systems operating under two separate federal waivers to operationalize those programs. So I think one of the key areas that we focused on is around workforce, as Dr. Wong has mentioned. And for the substance use workforce, where 80% of our workforce are counselors, which don't include mental health under their scope of practice, we've incentivized trainings for, around just knowing the basics, the mental health 101, so that they can at least increase their familiarity with those services. And we're also providing dollars for our SUD providers to diversify their workforce. For our workforce, diversifying means bringing in more licensed clinicians, because right now, they only represent 20% of our workforce, right? As opposed to on the mental health side, it's, it's actually majority licensed clinician. And so by diversifying and bringing in more licensed clinicians, our workforce will be able to provide more mental health services, even for people that they're serving with SUD conditions.
So I hear a lot of integration on the workforce development and culture side, but how is that translating to outcomes for our unhoused population who have both of these issues?
So, I mean, I can say that for, because we were just looking at this data, 42% of people who enter into our system who reported being unhoused or unstably housed, end up with some form of stable housing at the end of their care. That's inclusive of both SUD, as well as, I mean, many of those individuals do have some level of co-occurring, even if it's co-occurring more mild mental health conditions. And so we do think that by treating the whole person, that's one reflection, right? There's a lot of other metrics that we're tracking with respect to their physical healthcare as well as mental healthcare.
And I think one of the areas that we've seen progress is the ability to bring a MAT prescriber to each one of our field teams, and that has been integral in changing kind of the attitude of the field team in that, you know, we treat the person where they are, not just handing off to another department or another specialist. And we've seen it be very impactful with clients, too, because they don't have to seek out different kinds of resources, and they don't feel judged. That has been a big deal for the people we work with. They already feel a certain sense of stigma with their mental health issues, and then the next barrier for them is to admit to, you know, having a substance use disorder. But the way that our staff and our psychiatrists have been trained to work with the population, and I've seen this firsthand, because I've, you know, gone out on the streets with them to Skid Row and to Hollywood and the San Gabriel Riverbed, where they're able to bring down the defensive and just offer kind of like a seamless array of care.
Yeah, that's, that's good to hear, and I assume that if you had more reset, more resources invested in the spaces where you are working together, you would be able to scale what your service provision is to meet the needs that we're seeing on the streets. I assume resource, available resources is a component of why we're seeing the magnitude of, of issues on our- on our streets.
I think one component is resources and really still, it remains culture change too.
Well, seeing both of those, I think, is important. To focus on Department of Mental Health for a minute, as I mentioned, this issue comes up at every table that I'm at. And so, what, I've heard expansion of existing resources as one of the outcomes of the Declaration of Emergency in addition to the hiring, but are there any new programs that have been stood up as a result in DMH? Or are there, are there other ways that we've expanded capacity to serve people experiencing homelessness who are also experiencing mental health issues per the declaration?
Yes. So we have aside, you know, in addition to the expansion of the services that we've seen are working already, we've kind of tried to be very analytical about looking at what works and what doesn't work and, you know, capitalize on what does work. One of the new things coming online is, you know, our participation in IHOP and lending that support to those interim housing sites, which I think we've heard from them is badly needed. And then also, we have the housing supports for people transitioning from either homelessness to interim housing or interim housing to permanent supportive housing to make sure that they don't fall out of housing. We also have a program where we have peers who have lived experience as having been unhoused, be more involved in teams that go out to talk to folks. And I think that has been successful because they see resources and they see the pertinent issues a little bit differently than we do because it's not about, because, you know, how we see it is, okay, I have 50 interim housing beds available and I have 50 folks experiencing housing, I mean, experiencing homelessness, why isn't that a match? And what happens is, we don't sometimes look at, well, these beds aren't in communities that somebody wants to be in, or these beds are, have restrictions that somebody doesn't want to deal with, or, you know, there are other things that are involved. And I think as we implement, you know, programs that have a lot of dependence on people with lived experience, it gives us better insight to what can motivate somebody to accept a bed.
So we weren't doing those things before the Declaration of Emergency?
We were doing them as part of programs here and there, but with the Declaration of Emergency, it allowed us to focus on specific classifications that, you know, made it possible for us to build out programs that way.
Okay. I know that the governor has often referenced what new state funding like Prop 1 and BHBH as investments to end homelessness. And I know that you mentioned sort of the issues between what we're doing here at the county and where we run into issues at the state. So those dollars, when they directly come into DMH, how are you making sure that plans for their use are integrated with our homelessness response?
Well, when we look at those dollars, we look at where our highest areas of need are and we try to allocate according to those priorities. So of course, at the top of that list are people experiencing homelessness.
And does that happen in conversation with HI? Is that a coordinated, or this is what HI, this is what DMH directs?
No, this is in coordination with HI, with DHS, DPH, many, many partners, the, just our Justice Involved Partners, because we have resources all coming into the system. We need a certain number of beds, but we have to be strategic in what kinds of beds and where we place them. So a lot of factors come into play, like one factor, of course, is RT tools, you know, to do mapping, but a big factor is looking at where our folks who are unhoused have the greatest needs and where we're lacking housing. Sometimes though, it's not even just a matter of resources, but I know some of our service areas, it's, we have very little permanent supportive housing or interim housing because the neighborhoods have been super resistant, even though we have the funding, you know, in place. So I think, you know, it takes all of our departments working together to kind of get around that.
So I would say two, two more things on mental health and then I want to shift back to SAPSC. How are you working in DMH with our cities? I know Oney, who's been HI's Municipal Relations Lead, has had tremendous success in building relationship with cities. I know the cities are saying they've had a great working relationship. How are you using that resource that exists in the county to develop connection with our cities and connection to mental health services?
I'm not sure that we've really been using the emergency declaration specifically as a resource for developing those relationships, but we've had a strong focus on developing those relationships. And I'll be honest, it's because the cities come to us. And even though we have 88 cities, there are about, probably a dozen cities who come to us with really a strong sense of what they need and a specific list of demands. So we try to develop the relationship with the cities to see what is actually their need and what is actually doable. And whether it's by us or whether it's by our support of that city, then we can, you know, work on getting something out that would really help people. I think one of the things that we have a challenge with is, you know, recently, we approached by one city that represents 1% of the county, but they want a very large allocation. So we're trying to work with them to see, okay, how can we work with the amount of resources we can't dedicate to this and what you can bring to the table, have a partnership, leverage that and get you closer to what you think you need.
And finally, one of the things that I hear consistently from our local government partners is there's an expectation that DMH is taking the lead on all issues that people experiencing homelessness in their communities have with regard to mental health. And I know that in conversations I've had with you, you think there is, or the departments, the department operates as if there's a certain population for whom the department shows up and there's sort of this category of people who are struggling with mental illness, who need support and help, but there's just this gap in service provision. So what is happening to help them because that seems to be an ongoing urgent need that isn't being met?
I think what was meant to fill that gap or to meet the needs of people in that gap were the collaborations we have with our other partners and with HI. Like, for instance, with the MDTs, you know, they were supposed to have the capacity to do mild to moderate and then DMH handles the more severe and significant serious mental illness. But what we found was because of shifts in programming, shifts in funding, things like that, there was still this population of folks who have serious mental illness. It might not be at the highest security, they might not qualify for conservatorship, but it was more than could be addressed by like an outpatient clinic. So one of the things we're doing now is in, ahead of implementation of Prop 1, we're building out different levels of FSP so that we have a lower level FSP that can fill in that gap. So these are staff that will have lower caseloads and are more housing-focused so that they have the ability and the time to hold somebody's hand through a process, to check in with them much more frequently, to be much more involved.
Eddie.
Eddie. So I think what was formerly SB 82, which did a wonderful job in that space, but went away when the grant went away, and then we started Home Team to meet the highest security needs, I think our lower level FSP can step into that space and provide the kind of caseload and resources that we need to actually move people from that space. They're folks who probably don't qualify for hospitalization or conservatorship, but are not going to be able to just make it on their own.
That's right. And so, we're creating a response. It's not fully implemented yet, it sounds like from what you just said, but it's something that's being developed to address those who are in that gap. And we would, I assume, need additional resource to help build that out, to invest in those teams and, you know, think about how we are going to fund such an operation because I do know that that gap is something that we hear quite a bit about.
Yes. And we have already started implementing. We're implementing as we're developing because this is such an urgent situation. We don't have time to wait. So, you know, this is one instance where we're not going to let the perfect be the enemy of the good.
That's great to hear. I know, you know, there's an expectation because of Care Courts and SB 43, that there are lots of solutions that are now sort of at our table for the choosing, but again, these, these tools don't necessarily serve all of the people that we're, that we're needing to meet. And so, if people don't qualify for them, there's still this subset. So we are creating at the local level a solution to address that gap.
Yes.
So I'm glad to hear that. And how long do you think it will take to stand that up in a way that we'll see meaningful response out in our communities?
We're starting by rolling it out with our directly operated FSPs, just because we have a little bit more local control there. And they tend to take a higher number of homeless folks and higher acuity. So as we roll those out, we're going to take a look at what's the remaining need in each of the service areas and supervisory districts and then round it out from there with our legal entity providers. I think one of the challenges we have to overcome, when you're talking about resources, is even if we have the resources to staff these, when somebody is experiencing homelessness, we need a much larger pool of flex funds because there's going to be, like interim housing, we have to pay for food needs, we have to pay for a car, they have to get out of reposition, you know, whatever various needs. So as we put that all together, I think our testing ground is kind of our directly operated FSPs.
Yeah, I think as soon as we can stand them up, whatever it is you need to accelerate, whatever is getting in your way, please surface it to us because that needs to be stood up quickly. It's a desperate need that everybody is asking for, no matter the district.
Definitely. But I will be honest, staffing is still, you know, a challenge.
And so, what are we going to do to solve the staffing challenge?
Well, we have a lot of things in place that are going in the right direction. Last year, we did 1,400 hires and promotions. It's just that the need is outpacing our progress. It's sort of like the housing situation in LA County. So I think we're building different academic affiliations, like with HBCUs and other schools. We're going down back in the pipeline to earlier points to be able to build up folks. We're going for classifications that don't require as much training, like psych tech positions where you can get certification in a year and we can fully fund by stipend and reach out to underserved, underfunded communities. So we're trying all different solutions to get that staffing up.
But that still sounds like a pipeline thing, so that's not somebody who's going to come onto staff in the next couple of months to help us with our capacity?
Yeah, no, that is not. I mean, other than our recruitment, our recruitment, those are bodies that show up now.
And how are we doing in terms of recruitment? Is that?
The recruitment is going well in relation to how many people are graduating, but I think we have a shortage of people going into the field. We have a shortage of psychiatrists, even, you know, just in the medical field. So even though we're recruiting well, people are showing up, we have a smaller pool to even choose from.
Okay. Dr. Tsai, thank you for talking about the prioritization of how you're working with people who are also experiencing homelessness. Can you talk a bit more about what actually happens in the field-based substance use disorder services? I know in my district, it's sort of been characterized in some places as like county staff are out in a park tabling and handing out needles. And I don't really think that's what we're doing. So can you very explicitly talk about what do those substance use disorder services look like in a community? Do you see them everywhere? Are they in brick and mortar spaces? Are they out in the field? Tell me how, how it works.
So there's, field-based services are different than outreach and engagement. I think what you're describing is the outreach and engagement services that happen through our harm reduction agencies. And so, I can talk a little bit about that. And, you know, that is a provision of a multitude of services. You know, there's, there is syringe exchange or syringe service programs. They also distribute naloxone, fentanyl test strips, xylentzene test strips, they make referrals.
And so, when they do that, do they just give it out to people?
No.
Are they at a table? Do they say, come one, come all? How, how does it work?
So the provision of those services is the mechanism to engage with someone, right? The engagement is them having conversations about other needs that they have, whether they're medical, mental health, social services, et cetera. And so, that engagement should be more than just providing, you know, materials and supplies. It should be about building relationships. And that's the reason why staff will oftentimes go to the same place and they'll have a sense of where in the community, oftentimes there are people experiencing homelessness, where they are so that they can go seek them out.
And it's one-to-one or they like ask for a group to congregate around them or?
No, I mean, when you, when we talk to our mobile teams, they'll strategize around, well, I saw this person here at this park and this person on this street. And so, it usually is not, they're not attracting people to them. And that's the reason why I wanted to differentiate between those who are interested in services who would come to services because that's always going to be more efficient for that service provider. That's what they prefer. The field-based and the outreach services, those tend to be slightly less efficient, but the benefit there is we get to engage people who aren't going to be coming in the doors. And so, for the outreach services and the harm reduction services, some of them operate through brick and mortar sites, but a lot of them are street-based outreach services because they're intentionally engaging people who would not go to those brick and mortar sites.
And there's also been a concern, given the types of drugs that we are seeing out in our communities, that these kinds of services might actually be harmful because it isn't encouraging people to continue using fentanyl or crystal meth to use too that are particularly What do you say to that?
Yeah, I understand that there is concerns that things like harm reduction services may enable people to engage in, you know, counterproductive activities. I would say a couple of things to that. One is harm reduction is practiced in all areas of healthcare now. We don't call it harm reduction because they're not distributing, you know, fentanyl test strips or syringes, but that's your primary care doctor acknowledging that even though you actually gained weight when they recommended that you lose weight at the next appointment, they're still going to provide the best care for you, right? That is harm reduction. And so, you know, I would normalize it in that way. With respect to the harm reduction services offered to people who use drugs, those are evidence-based services and the CDC has a good website that outlines all of this, that indicate that, you know, there are no negative repercussions on public safety. People do not seek out drugs more. People do have reduced rates of overdoses as well as reduced rates of transmissible conditions such as HIV, hepatitis. And so, you know, there is a lot of data to back up the benefit of these services over time. I understand that sometimes there are individual level experiences that may be negative, as is the case with a lot of other health services, but at a population level, there is not a lot, there is no question that these services overall are beneficial.
And what is the scale at which these services are being offered?
So the reason why we've increased harm reduction services by 500% over the past three years is because we started out from a very low level, right? And so, just using one community, because obviously the services vary depending on the community, you know, Santa Monica, they offer services for up to three hours per week, one afternoon per week. And so, the services are limited. And, you know, they're typically looking for individuals versus setting up shop somewhere and kind of attracting a whole large group of people. That is not what typically happens.
And so, in the, so up to three hours per week is what I hear. So what happens when those particular service providers are not there? Nobody else is there?
Well, that's the reason why they're connecting the individuals that they're engaging when they're there for that half afternoon a week to other services, right? So the entity that we contract with there also provides other services. They happen to be a federally qualified health center, so they provide medical services, mental health services, and also some level of substance use services.
I know that meth-related overdose fatalities are of particular concern in my district. I know that's not unique to the county, but I know it's something that's come up a lot in conversations in my office. So what specifically are we doing on meth-related issues in the unhoused community? Because there's a belief that there is, you know, sort of a network of people who are using our unhoused communities to expand and distribute meth and increase its use. So what are we doing to fight that?
One of the most exciting new programs that's been launched as a result of a federal waiver is the provision of contingency management or incentives for people with substance use disorders, specifically stimulant use disorders. That is the primary evidence-based treatment for people with stimulant use disorders such as methamphetamine. And that's Medi-Cal reimbursable incentives for individuals with stimulant use disorders. The idea is that we would demonstrate this because it's a five The idea is that we would demonstrate this because it's a five-year demonstration project, and that if we see outcomes at a state level, we would be able to apply contingency management potentially to individuals with other substance use diagnoses. We also have a methamphetamine task force that focuses both on prevention and treatment. On the treatment side, one of the things that we're focusing on that we don't talk a lot about is that while there are no FDA-approved medications for methamphetamine, there are off-label uses of medications that have been demonstrated to be helpful, right? They're not a silver bullet, but they can at least, from a fractional percentage perspective, improve outcomes to a certain degree with people with methamphetamine. And there's also some research on new medications that potentially can help on it.
And I know the harm reduction and sort of the outreach services that people see out in the field often get a lot of the attention. But tell us also what you're doing in terms of, for those who are ready to pursue sobriety, how are we investing in that, encouraging that, giving that as an alternative for people who are ready to try?
I mean, we've been very excited in launching payment reform because it's given us the financial resources to really finance the substance use system in a way that hasn't been financed in many, many decades. And as a result of that, we've been able to grow capacity across the board in the way that I presented on. And we're also being thoughtful in terms of the tools that we create for the general public, including the messaging campaigns that we launch, to try to make it as easy as possible for people to access those services. We've done a lot of work with our provider community around gearing up their workforce and around how to use the payment reform funding in smart ways to allow them to serve more people. That's complemented the reaching 95% initiative well, which is really about engaging more people, right? How do we do a better job of particularly engaging that 95% of people who are not interested in services? Because that's a really key group for us to engage. Most SUD systems are focused on the 5% who aren't coming into services. We're focusing both on the 5% as well as the 95%. And for that 5%, it's about improving our workforce so that we can provide higher-quality, what I call stickier services, where people stay in care for longer, which has been demonstrated to improve SUD outcomes.
I would push back a little bit on the characterization of not interested because I do think that there are people who will be interested once the trust is there, once the engagement has reached a certain level. So I do think that we've found in the work that we've been doing in communities that some people who have been characterized as not interested actually are. And it's just how we approach and engage them that makes the difference.
Agreed.
So I just want us to really, as part of our culture, we're talking about culture shift, be really acknowledging that there are people who want this help, but they might not know what's for them. They might not think about themselves in, you know, as sort of in that category. They might not know where to access or feel comfortable having those conversations. And as a result, they don't know where to go or what's available. So I'm glad to hear that we are investing in that. And so if people are interested, are we outreach-ing in the same ways that we're connecting through field-based and harm reduction services? Are we outreach-ing in that same way when it comes to sobriety?
Yes, definitely. I mean, also, you know, we're engaging schools. We're engaging different groups that we haven't engaged as much in the past, right? Whether they're community, faith communities, communities where we have disproportionately high, you know, in particular, Black and Latinx populations. And so we're really trying to engage people in different ways than we have in the past in order to further the aim of touching more people in our system.
Okay. And then finally, Cherie, obviously, you know, this is all about how do we coordinate through your leadership, through the declaration of emergency. And I know that you've certainly characterized in the past, you know, a strong working relationship with both of these departments. And we continue to see, you know, people struggling at a scale that people are not quite convinced that as much is happening as is what is, you know, being presented to us here today. So what do... What would you like to see be done differently in order for us to be seeing different outcomes? Because I think that we're all clear that work... Good work is happening. And yet, you know, we can have somebody come down and highlight the one encampment in a neighborhood that we didn't get to, or the one that happens to be in their neighborhood and not the one down the street in another neighborhood that we addressed. And so what is in our control to change to, you know, move to scale? And what do you need to also be able to scale?
Yes, thank you for that question. I do think that I would echo and build on some of the comments that were made here today. I think that one of the... An area where our partners, you know, providers, cities, city partners, constituents, you know, may feel like they're not seeing enough and they want us to do better, does have to do with, as we're talking about here today, the number of people who are dealing with mental health and substance use disorders, who are actively experiencing those conditions and experience them in unsheltered settings as well as sheltered settings. And I think it is about the scaling up, continuing to refine, continuing to learn and do better, on being able to engage people who at that point in time are not engaging in a treatment program. So I think like the efforts that we're talking about here, but continuing to really look at how we intentionally like align resources with our outreach providers, with our interim housing providers, so that they have the tools, that they have onsite support, to be able to continue to engage and bring into treatment people who are not currently into treatment. So I think that's one area. We're hearing about how there's more investment and deepening investment there, but I think we need to continue that, scale it, and refine it.
Do we need to update the declaration of emergency?
To address that particular area? I actually, I would ask our departments if there's anything else that they need. I think that they have let us know that, as it relates, that this is within their purview already. And are there any additional authorities that you would need to be able to deepen in this area?
Yeah, nothing immediately comes to mind, but we'll certainly consider and let you know.
I think a second area is that when... As soon as somebody experiencing homelessness says yes, that they are ready to participate in a treatment program, that we want to be able to have them have immediate access to that treatment program. So I think that for most of our programs, and I'm going to ask my colleagues again to step in, that access is very quick. We do have some wait times for certain types of programs. And so in those areas, you know, there would be, from the perspective of prioritizing people experiencing homelessness, we'd be looking at opportunities to support those individuals with having access to that resource that may be more limited and have an expedited path through any wait times.
And is it limited because you don't have enough funding? Is it limited because... What is the limitation?
Limitation is typically just providers, providers and staffing. For instance, like, you know, FSP. System-wide, we have availability for FSP, but there are certain service areas that it's more impacted than others. And it could be that, you know, we have higher need in a certain service area, but we can't get providers there. So there will be, you know, a need for more spots there, but we'll have another service area where we have a lot of open spots, but... And a lot of providers, but we don't have that same level of need. It's kind of like our bed situation, too. So I think a lot of this is being able to get providers, get the staffing to where it's needed most. And then also, in the meantime, what we do is kind of creative solutions. So we borrow staff, we borrow slots from a different service area then, and we help transport clients. But a lot of times, clients, you know, would choose not to go to a different community, and understandably so.
Yeah, I think that flexibility and being able to shift based on what the demonstrated need is, is part of what we're expecting, you know, as an outcome of the use of the declaration also. You know, it sounds like you don't need additional authorities, you have all of the authority that you need. So then the expectation is that when there are beds available, you know, but they're assigned, you know, that you're working inter-jurisdictionally with each other to say, "We have somebody who needs this bed now. I know you're trying to hold on to it in the event that, but we need to move with a sense of urgency now." And you all working together is going to make that difference. Supervisor Mitchell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just on that point, that's why I asked the question earlier about if we could see the utilization by SPA, because we know that there are different needs in different areas. And you're right, you know, people do have the right to determine where they want to be. And so making sure that we know and we are tracking the need to make sure that the resources are going to areas where they're needed most. I just wanted to follow up on the chair's question with regard to recruitment. And, you know, we're hearing in every shared space, at CSAC, at NACO, any place local government gathers, about just the dearth of people coming into government work. And so while I know the recruitment at colleges and everything feels like it's a step or two away from our immediate need, I am clear that we all are doing everything we can to attract people to government work, and so continuing to talk about it and promote it. And it's a direct symptom of a lack of sustained funding in these social service delivery professions that have led people to not pick them anymore. And so we have to prove that it's a need, it is a... That government will continue to invest in the private sector, in these professions, in these sectors, to attract people to them. I would hope, when you talked about going to the community colleges to provide services to our transition-age youth, that that will be a place also, that you'll be working with those college presidents to talk about these professions and whatever they can do to begin to shape certificated programs, curriculum, whatever, to attract top talent to these professions.
Yes, definitely Supervisor Mitchell. And on top of that, I've also added the request for every event we attend, we get to have a separate table for recruitment, too. So, you know, one of our most successful events has been Taste of Soul, where we, you know, took a recruitment table.
And a part of that is all of the buildup and the outreach and advertising that they do around the Taste of Soul, that people know it is a place you can come to and get hired on the spot. And I think last year, we had 30 departments participate. It comes up second week of October, I believe. So far, I understand, we've had 27 departments who voluntarily... This isn't a Supervisor Mitchell voluntold you all to show up at Taste of Soul. County departments are showing up because of that hiring experience. And it was significant numbers. I was shocked at the numbers of people that got hired on the spot. And so I think it's, again, working with community entities, the press, so they... So people come prepared to the event. It's not just, "I'm walking down Crenshaw Boulevard and decide I'll go over there and apply." People come prepared to apply. So we will continue to have those partnerships to continue to recruit and bring people into government work. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Executive Officer, please call the members of the public who've signed up to speak on this item.
Will the following individuals please come forward? Devon Williams, Dr. Critical Truth Bay, and Wanda Johnson, please come forward, and Steph will assist you. As a final reminder for participants on the telephone, if you would like to address Set Matter 1, if you have not already done so, please press 1 and 0 now to be placed in the speaking queue. Moderator, we have the first remote speaker, please.
Our first participant is Roy Humphries. Please unmute and speak directly into your phone. You may begin.
...in one minute. The state is sending a message. Dirty Harry says a man's got no limitation. Supervisor Barker, at all, you have the money. Stop spending tax dollars on illegal aliens slash immigrants. Fact, transients are not homeless. It is time for you to woke up and stop the lie. You and your staff must visit my YouTube channel and watch Transient Cruise 9/14/24 to discover... I paid for a U-Haul to bring this transient to Roland Heights. Yes, Ryan Serrano, the police officer, said, "Lasha, to the rescue," which Noam Chomsky says failed states. Over 700 hits in two days. There's a huge population of tunnel dwellers in the county. Ask Ryan Romo. County trails is underfunded and abject failure in transient habitat management. For more information and enlightenment, subscribe to Thomas Soul TV. And if you want to know about how to use...
Thank you. Your time has expired. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Eric Previn. Please speak directly into your phone and make sure you're not muted. Please go ahead.
The... I'm trying to miss this now. I've had to call back. Is this the general public comment?
No, this is Set Matter 1 on people experiencing homelessness, substance use and mental health.
Yeah, right. Right, I was listening. Okay, so, wow. What a exhaustive discussion. And I take note that Holly Mitchell said that she really enjoyed it. I find it painful because though I do appreciate everybody's desire to try to make an impact, all of the desperation for additional resources, yet it's clear that the resources that we're trying to muster are being put into a system that is so... I don't want to say defective, because it's just rife with challenges. And some of that is not your fault, of course, but I just feel like it's like we need a different philosophy than getting funding in...
Thank you. Your time has expired. Next speaker, please.
Put some money on the screen. What do you mean?
Our next participant is T. Carter. Please make sure you're not muted on your phone and speak directly into it. You may begin.
I am calling in regards to item number one. It's very strange that Holly Mitchell finds this survey or this study so interesting like a movie. And it's also alarming that there isn't anyone from Consumer Affairs in Skid Row. They are overpricing with the liquor stores, though the EBT cards that are being used, the... The funding for liquor stores is given out to the agent owners. They get double the amount. So a bag of chips is like three...
This is about mental health and substance use and people experiencing homelessness. If you could focus your comments on that topic, please.
Well, you spoke about Skid... You allowed them to speak about Skid Row in this, so I can't speak about what they spoke about. They spoke about Skid Row. Did they not? They spoke about DMH in this report, so I can't speak about what they spoke about?
You can talk about mental health and substance use on Skid Row, yes.
But that's biased. I was just talking about that. I was speaking about that, and you stopped me, so I'll save my time for public comment. You allowed them to speak about Skid Row and DMH in the same report, and I was about to speak about that, so you stopped me. So I'll save my time for public comment. You didn't do that.
Thank you. Your time has expired. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Sophia Quinones. Please make sure you're not muted on your phone and speak directly into it. You may begin.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Hello. Okay, I just want to say happy birthday to Holly Mitchell, and also want to acknowledge Judge Carter for ruling in favor of our veterans. Veterans are living in our streets. They're hurting, and there are properties that have been designated, donated by individuals for veterans and their care. So I'd like to salute Judge Carter, and I hope that the Board of Supervisors looks at the other properties that are also designated for our veterans that have been in public manager. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Madam Chair, there are no other remote speakers to address the board.
Thank you. We'll now go to speakers in person. Please go ahead.
Okay, so I don't know why they left, but they need to hear this. So homeless healthcare, driving in a black golf cart, handing out needles and all this stuff, that is not harm reduction. That's what they call harm reduction. It's not right. First and foremost, we had a meeting with your deputies on July 2nd, Ms. Horvath, okay? So you've got Pharrell, Gabriella, Stephen Edwards, Wiley, Nicole, Nick, Juliana Perez. Eight deputies, they came 10 minutes late. It was only a 30-minute meeting. They came 10 minutes late, didn't even do the follow-up, as we mentioned with Ms. Amy Perkins. We did a capacity building with LASSA. This is the fourth year we're following our capacity building with LASSA as a homeless healthcare provider. So what I'm saying is that if you really want results, it's not fair to you, Ms. Horvath, because I know that you are doing the right thing, but your staff has to reflect your needs as well for the community. Wanda Johnson is one of many, many, many women who went through the homeless system, had a voucher, didn't even get the voucher, was back out on the street and abused by the shelter to this day. So we, if you really want help, then...
Thank you. Your time has expired. Next speaker.
Wanda Johnson, I would like if you guys take my number, 424-271-1300. Call me anytime because I'm homeless and I might be anywhere. I just got accepted to the program. But first to serve, Mrs. G, she treats us like garbage. She needs to be... She needed to be moved away because she's awful. She treats us like trash. But anyway, I would like to vouch her. I've been homeless, I've been a victim of crime by a family member, and I'm in the streets with my dog, and I need help. And I'm going to start showing up to these meetings and support her because I need to get off the streets. I'm 60 years old. I have a letter from my doctor. If I can read it real quick, I have a letter from my doctor that he just... He just wrote me. Where is it? I don't even know where it's at. So nervous. It says... It says, "Wanda Johnson, who has been my patient for over 20 years. During this time, she has been diagnosed with seizures and had high blood pressure, chronic pain, and various mental health issues. Ms. Johnson is currently homeless and urgently needs safe environment due to her medical mental health conditions." So I have this letter, so if you guys can take a picture.
We can have someone come speak with you right away. We can have someone come speak with you right away to offer you assistance. Thank you for being here today. Are there any other speakers on this item? Okay, seeing none. This report is received and filed. Hearing no objections, that will be the order. And we'll now hear from members of the public wishing to address the board on general public comment. For members of the public on the telephone, please press 1 and 0 now to comment on this item. Executive Officer, please read the call-in information and call the members of the public who have signed up to speak on general public comment.
Members of the public, you will have one minute to address the board on general public comment. Please state your name. You may only address the board on general public comment. We will now call in-person speakers, and while they are coming forward, we will take telephonic speakers.
Will Noel West, Jesus Rojas, Dr. Critical Truthbe, and Wanda Johnson, please come forward. Steph will assist you. Moderator, we have the first remote speaker, please.
Our first participant is T. Carter. Please make sure your phone is not muted and speak directly into it. You may begin.
Hi, I'm calling back to reclaim my time before I was cut off by the chair, and I'm calling to speak about item number one and item number two and also public comment. Chair, is that okay with you? Is it okay before I speak on the stand comment, before you cut me off? I just want to make sure.
There's only one minute for general public comment today? Just one, just one minute, as I understand it. Let me get clarity before you begin.
So you cut me, so I never got...
Hold. Let me get clarity, sir, from our county council. General public comment on this public hearing meeting is one minute. Is that correct, Madam County Council?
That is correct, Madam Chair.
Yes. Okay, so you have one minute. Please restart the clock for him. And go ahead.
So you cut me off earlier and I didn't get to speak on that item. You cut me off earlier and I didn't get to speak on that item. You said they were not speaking about DMH, and they were. And I was speaking about Skid Row also, and you cut me off. So I never got to speak on item number one. When do I get to speak on that? Because you were wrong when you cut me off.
Right now.
So when do I speak on item number one? I would like to speak on item number one and public comment. So you only give me one minute for public comment. When do I get to speak on item number one? You cut me off and told me I was speaking on the wrong topic, and I was referring to what they stated. So you were wrong for cutting me off. So when do I speak on item number one? Waiting on my response. When do I speak on item number one?
This is your time.
So you're saying I don't get to speak on item number one for the time that you cut me off?
You can speak on anything you want at this time, and you have 10 seconds left.
I never got to speak on item number one. I said I'll reclaim my time because you told me I was on the wrong topic, and I was not on the wrong topic. So you excluded me from speaking on item number one.
Thank you. Your time has expired. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Roy Humphries. Please make sure your phone is not muted and speak directly into it. You may begin.
Okay, thank you. Item number two, Hill of Solis killed a 2,000-bed psych facility in 2019, correct me on the data if I'm wrong. Item number four, break ground on Royal Vista like yesterday. And I've checked that the 12,000 units thereafter has water certification. Let's get that done. We need the money. We need the people to have a house. Number five, statewide school of choice. And if you doubt me, I refer you to Dr. Thomas Soul, a Black educator, by the way. Thank you. And what we need also in this situation with the homeless situation is, and I've said it once before, at least countywide system of transient campsites. So you can get this guy in my video off of our streets, and of course, there are about three of them that I have out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Jesus Rojas. Please make sure your phone is unmuted and speak directly into it. You may begin.
Hi, my name is Jesus Rojas. I'm from the Department Association of Greater Los Angeles. We urge the Board of Supervisors to reconsider the definition of cooling-ready to be expanded to passive cooling, as well as alternate forms of active cooling, including evaporator coolers. The recent blackouts have shown that the grid content can't handle AC units or heat pumps that are on 24/7. We need more centralized cooling via community cooling centers and libraries at senior centers, recreation centers, and other public facilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Sophia Quinones. Please make sure your phone is unmuted and speak directly into it. You may begin.
Hello, speaking on agenda item five and public comment. I wanted the Board to know that East LA Bojai Coalition, as opposed to the Charter School, we believe that no school should be built adjacent to a freeway in East Los Angeles where surrounded by the East LA interchange. It is the largest interchange in the country. The Center for Disease Control has the documentation and maps all the cancer clusters around our freeways. We have generations of planned environmental racism around this corridor. So we urge the Board not to support accessing a permit to exterior, to deny the permit, and we feel that this location is not acceptable to the children or the staff that would work there. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Eric Previn. Please make sure your phone is unmuted and speak directly into it. You may begin.
How much time do I have for all of the items in a general public comment?
One minute.
Oh, that's awfully tight. That's disappointing. Well, all right, then I'll make it brief. I appreciated the declaration of emergency discussion. I'd like to add to the scope, let's declare an emergency at Studio City Rec Center, Lindsey P. Horvath, and let's notify the MRCA and all of the local environmental groups about what's been going on there. And also, I'd like to file a grievance. There's no water available for the residents during a period where they're just ripping apart trees and destroying open space in order to pursue Nithi Ram and Paul Krikoyan and Brad Sherman's insidious plan, which you're a part of, Horvath, and the Harvard Westlake massacre of the open space right around the corner. I don't know how you can live with yourself with five high school regulation basketball courts within 100 yards for these private schools when you're up here trying to...
Thank you. Your time has expired.
We don't need to expand.
Next speaker, please.
Okay.
Our next participant is Salem Allen, or Ally. I do apologize. Please speak directly into your phone and make sure it's unmuted. You may begin. Salem, your line is open.
Salem, are you there? Okay, we'll go to the next speaker moderator.
Madam Chair, there are no other remote speakers to address the board.
Okay, if Salem comes back, we will go to her. But for now, we will go to speakers in person. Please go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Supervisors. In my comments earlier about the Shores complex in Marina Del Rey that's on a ground lease, I just wanted to make clear that I don't represent Shores. I'm not here advocating for Shores. I'm advocating for my client who happens to have been a short-term rental provider at the facilities. Obviously, it's legal there, but my point is, I'm seeing a broader problem. Tough job you people have. There's a great need of money. It's really important that we maximize, obviously, the benefits that exist relative to revenue coming into the county. And right now, it's like blocked. And this is going back to Supervisor Barker's comment, hey, if things are not happening, bring it to our attention. And that's in the spirit in which I'm basically saying, you know, with regard to this lease, and I know it's in Supervisor Mitchell's district, but it's important that that ground lease be renegotiated to clarify, and that the pluses and minuses in the economic probabilities and what needs to get done should get done. And hopefully, maybe we can...
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker.
So just in general, this is primarily for the rumors that's been happening and the abuse towards Haitians concerning Ohio. I want to make very clear how it started was inorganic and how it spread. When you see Haitians now being targeted for something that's not even true, primarily to divert the 11 million migrants, and I would say maybe 300,000 of them are actually Haitians. The rest are from other countries. But they want to divert the immigration crisis to a group of people who dare to become the first free Black republic. That's the only reason why Haiti is being abused, because we didn't want to be slaves any longer, and we won. And because of it, we are constantly being taken from our resources. Hillary Clinton took a billion dollars just to start. But I want to say thank you, Horvath, for recognizing Haitian Heritage Month. We will never forget that, and we want to honor you at least for recognizing...
Thank you very much. Are there any other speakers? Okay, with that, that concludes our time. Oh, we do have one speaker back in queue. Moderator, please go ahead.
Our next participant is Salem Allen. Please speak directly into your phone and make sure it's unmuted. You may begin.
Hi, this is Salem. I'm calling regarding the sheriff department and the abuse that has been going on. And how can we hold him accountable? Why isn't there a community meeting with the sheriff, the meeting the public? And then plus, there is a very strange relationship between the sheriff and the DMH that needs to be addressed immediately. No sheriff should hang up upon me, and they are violating their rights because when they interfere in a legal case in a court system, there is a power of abuse by the DMH sheriff or the district attorney. I want the investigation to start immediately. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers, moderator?
Madam Chair, there are no other remote speakers to address the board.
Very well. That concludes our time for public comment and concludes today's meeting. The next regular meeting of the board will be held on Tuesday, September 24th, 2024, at 9:30 a.m. We are adjourned.